Are you, are you guys ready?
Yeah.
I'm all ready.
All right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see a full chamber. Welcome to the Burlingame City Council Meeting of June 20th. And as always, we will, having called the meeting, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to ask one of our city's old friends and business leaders, Lisa Kirshner, at the Marriott, to lead us in the pledge. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. If we could do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Present.
Councilmember Beach.
Present.
Vice Mayor Colson.
Present.
Mayor Brownrigg.
Here. All present and accounted for. The next item is a new law on the books, AB 2449, remote participation at Mr. City Attorney. Since all council members are here, there is no, we don't need to do this yet. Very good. We did meet in closed session tonight, Mr. Attorney. Were there any items to report out from closed session?
There's no reportable item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It takes us to upcoming events, and we do have some. I'll start with Park and Rec and note, first of all, that for anybody who likes to use Alpine Park, which is a wonderful park on the other side of California. It's going to be closed Thursday for tree work, so don't bring the kids on June 22nd. Music in the park starts this June 30th. In what has to be one of the better retro band names, it's going to be kicked off by Fleetwood Macramay. So do go by and enjoy an evening of music. And our Park and Rec people want parents to know that the summer camps are still open and there's room. And sign the kids up. There are great programs there. Over on the library side of the house, we remain, the contest to name the owl that is in main hall, main entryway is open until June 26th. The winner will be announced on June 7th, so put on your creative hat and come up with a name for the owl. Really cool art and dance program being sponsored by the Asian Art Museum at our library tech lab on June 2nd. That's Thursday again from 6 to 7. It's called Beyond Bollywood, and it is a study of Indian dance. So come along and learn something and enjoy the wonders of the Indian movie world. And then finally, on July 8th, from 10 to noon, there will be a plant exchange, just like a book exchange. You bring a plant, you take a plant. And there will also be herbs that the library will help you build your herb garden this summer. So those are some of the upcoming events that we have in our community. Looking forward to a really fun summer. Colleagues, are there any other events that people would like to notify the public about? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. This takes us to another new law, SB 1439, Mr. City Attorney.
So if this is an opportunity for any council members that may have an SB 1439 conflict, to make that disclosure.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to state on the record for members of the public, the state law requires certain political donations over $250 have to be disclosed if they create a conflict with an agenda item. I am not aware of any donations that meet that criteria. If anybody is aware, can contact our city clerk. Thank you so much.
Okay, disclosed. Thank you very much. Now, we have a number of items on the agenda tonight. Some of them will take some time. So, you know, buckle buckle up. And we'll get started right away. But if anybody needs to leave, and if anybody wants to leave comments and writing, of course, that becomes part of the public record as well. So our first item is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. Madam City Clerk, are we presenting this to anybody in particular, or we are just noticing it as the city?
We're just noticing it as the city.
Okay. So I will, in this case, because I think the history is interesting, I'm going to briefly read the proclamation that we are issuing as a city. And it notes that on January 1st, 1863, President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, which declared all persons held as slaves within the Confederate territories to be free. The Emancipation Proclamation changed the legal status of more than three and a half million enslaved people and paved the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery in the United States. On June 19th, 1865, two years later, the Union General Gordon Granger went into Galveston, Texas, and found that there were still slaves being kept in Texas. He had the privilege and the honor to announce that slavery had been ended two years previously, and all of those enslaved people among the last to learn of their freedom became free. Now, to the great credit of the great state of Texas, Texas began celebrating Juneteenth. Beginning in 1866 with community events. And then that became part of the Black American experience to celebrate Juneteenth. But then the state went further, and then June, January 1, 1980, made Juneteenth an official Texas state holiday. And I think that's important because what that shows is that taking a note of a page out of history and recognizing harms done does not have to be a culture war issue. This does not have to be a red and blue issue. This is just a common decency issue. We recognize harm. We acknowledge it. We try to do better going forward. That's the way of the United States. That's what makes us a great country. And it was to Texas's credit that they were the first to create this holiday, which is now spread across the country. And of course, is honored in all 50 states. And including this great state of California, and including in the city of Burlingame. So on Juneteenth, we recommit to our shared work to ensure racial justice, equity, and equality in America, and we commemorate the centuries of struggle and progress led by abolitionists, educators, advocates, public officials, and everyday Americans who have brought our nation closer to fulfilling its promise of absolute equality. And I will invite any comments from colleagues in a second. I will simply say that besides being an important recognition for all of our Black American neighbors, friends, and colleagues. We also have a city connection because Anson Burlingame was one of the fiercest fighters against slavery. Back in the 1850s, he worked extremely hard to get Abraham Lincoln elected president because he judged Lincoln to be the most likely path to ending the horrible policy of slavery. And so we, we honor also Anson Burlingame in honoring the end of slavery for his small, but I think important part in it. And so with that, that is the proclamation recognizing Juneteenth. Colleagues, would anyone like to make any additional comments? Yes, please. Vice Mayor Col.
Thank you. So I do want to thank the mayor. We received a, an email regarding flag flying on this federal holiday. And I thought his response with regard to reaching out to like the NAACP and figuring out and asking the people for whom we celebrate this holiday to participate in the resolution of that. Is there a special flag, a flag they want? I think that's just a really nice and inclusive gesture. So I appreciate you taking that response on behalf of all of us.
On behalf of all of us. Any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Beach.
No, thanks, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation. It was great to see this really catching momentum throughout the county. Lots of celebrations over the weekend of Black history and culture and a reminder for our commitment to racial justice too. So it's good to see this momentum in Burlingame taking this step.
Thank you for that. I am reminded that remembering history doesn't mean we have to get stuck in history. But I think forgetting history is where you see the most awful crimes across the globe. When people forget about history, when people forget about how to treat one another decently, that's when the worst crimes happen. And our country's better than that. So we are delighted to celebrate Juneteenth today. That takes us to our second presentation. And this is a presentation about the Bay Delta Water Plan and Peter Dreckmeyer. Is Peter here? There he is. Hi, I didn't see you. Peter is a former elected official and the mayor of Palo Alto at one point for his sins. But has now moved on into the environment.
Sorry, that's my fault.
Ma'am. We like to think of Palo Alto as the Burlingame of the Mid Peninsula. And we had Fleetwood Mask last week, so the bands are getting around. Good evening, Mayor Brownrigg and council members. Peter Dreckmeyer, I'm the Policy Director for the Tuolumne River Trust, been with the trust for 16 years. And my goal tonight is to convince you that the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission can become a much better steward of the Tuolumne River, where we get our hetch-etchy water without risking running out of water or imposing rationing more severe than we're used to. Or developing a lot of expensive, unneeded alternative water supplies. So I'm going to jump in and Mikan is going to help me out here. You see a map here of the Tuolumne. It starts in Yosemite. It drains the northern half. The Hetch-Echey reservoir is in Yosemite next. And 2.7 million people depend on water from the SFPUC. Eighty-five percent of that comes from the Tuolumne. Next. There's a much larger dam downstream, Don Pedro. This is owned and operated by the Modesto and Trulock Irrigation Districts. Next. And it's primarily used to irrigate 200,000 acres of farmland in Stanislas County. Next. So our water starts in, up in high in the Sierra. Next. Blows through the Tuolumne Meadows. Next. Then the Grand Canyon of the Tuolumne. And into Hetch-Echey Reservoir. Next. And downstream, we have world-class rafting. Next. Beautiful scenery, swimming holes, waterfalls, live fishing. Next. So for these reasons, the Tuolumne was designated a Wild and Scenic River in 1984. Next. Don Pedro separates the upper Tuolumne from the lower Tuolumne. Next. So the upper Tuolumne there on the right, 83 miles is protected as Wild and Scenic. The lower Tuolumne is there on the left. Next. It's a very different river there flowing through the Central Valley, much calmer. Next. And that's where we still have salmon. These are ball ranch salmon. Next. They are also known as king salmon. They are the largest salmon. Usually don't get quite this big. But you can see they bring a lot of nutrients from the ocean into these upland habitats. They're born in the freshwater, move out to the ocean, get it nice and big and bring those nutrients up when they're spawning. And they fuel the food web. Next. So we're really talking about a salmon-based ecosystem. It's not just about one fish. Next. But the salmon, not only are they a keystone species, they're also indicators of the health of the ecosystem. Next. And the challenge for the Tuolumne is that humans divert four out of every five gallons. Most of that's for agriculture, but quite a bit for the Bay Area. Next. And you see here, this is how well we're doing against the state and federal salmon doubling goal. And the three rivers on the right are the tributaries to the San Joaquin River. And you see that the Tuolumne is worse than any other river in the Central Valley. Next. This is where the Tuolumne River joins the San Joaquin. Next. And this area to the left is 1,600 acres known as Dos Rios. And some great news. We worked with river partners to purchase it. It's been restored to wildlife habitat. It helps with flood prevention. And the governor has announced it's going to be the next state park. Next. So the San Joaquin flows into the Delta. Coming from the north is the Sacramento River. Next. And the Delta is connected to the Bay and to the Pacific Ocean. Next. So the San Francisco Bay Delta is in a state of ecological crisis. It's gotten worse and worse over the decades. And next, we are in the process of updating the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan, which was required by the Clean Water Act. And this process is overseen by the State Water Board, State Water Quality Control Board. These are experts. They have scientists. They know regulations and they've led the charge. Next. So the Delta, the Bay Delta is the largest estuary in the West Coast of the Americas, very important ecosystem. Half of the water, the precipitation that falls on California drains out through the Bay Delta. Next. And it's a very vibrant ecosystem, 500 species of fish and wildlife. Next. Major stopover for the Pacific Flyway. Next. It's the migration corridor for salmon and other anatomous fish that share their life cycle between freshwater and saltwater. Next. And it's changed. It's been altered since the time of the Gold Rush. Levees have been built to convert the wetlands into ag lands. And then upstream, a lot of that freshwater is diverted in an average year, about only about half of the natural freshwater makes it to the Delta. Next. And the low flows have a big impact on the environment. Temperature is a big one. This is a photo from the Klamath River back in 2002, I believe, and 70,000 salmon died after water was diverted at a terrible time of year. Next. Obviously, fish need water to move around. Most importantly, it's to flesh out the babies when it's time for them to go out to the ocean. And that's a really challenging time for them. Next. Also, it's really important to have flood plains. So these are areas adjacent to the main channel where there's a lot more food, the baby, baby fish can get bigger, and they have protection from the predator fish. Many of them are non-native that are in the main channel. Next. We've altered the ecosystem from a fast-moving cold river to a slow-moving warm stream that favors non-native species like bass that evolved in those conditions. Here you see water hyacinth over the native species. Next. And then down in the Delta, which are underserved communities. There are problems with toxic algae blooms that can make people sick, can kill pets and wildlife. And that's a result of slow-moving, warm, stagnant, nutrient-rich water. Next. And you probably all know that the commercial salmon fishing season had to be canceled this year for just the third time in history. Next. So in December 2018, the State Water Board adopted updates to the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan requiring 40% of unimpaired flow between February and June. So for those months, we could still take three out of five for human gallons for human use. Next. And the irrigation districts in the Central Valley sued. Next. San Francisco PUC joined them, and then Basca filed their own lawsuit. Next. And what they're promoting is what they called voluntary agreements. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here. But these are all things that have been tried in the past and have failed. Next. And the National Marine Fisheries Service did a peer review of their voluntary agreement for the Tuolumne and found major flaws here. When you think about it, you need flows for the temperature, for the floodplain inundation, for flushing out the baby salmon, for making sure that Delta doesn't have the toxic algae blooms. None of those are included in the voluntary agreement. Next. So we all know that fish need water. Question is how much? The State Water Board determined San Joaquin really needed about 60% of unimpaired flow. They settled 40%, understanding there were other beneficial uses. Next. So we wanted to know why the SFPUC was so concerned. We got the data from them on on how water has been used. And we created a water supply calculator so we could look at different factors and we could try different inputs. Next. And what we found is that with the drought of record, six years from 87 to 92, at current demand there, which was 198 million gallons per day at the time, it's a little lower now. We could make it through that drought of record, six years, without requiring any rationing or bringing any new alternative water supplies like recycled water online. With rationing, we could get through a seventh year. Next. And at that point, the SFPUC said, well, we're not disagreeing with your numbers. But we're planning for something called the design drought, which combines the two worst droughts of the last century. The six-year drought and then the driest two-year period, 76, 77. And assumes that demand is going to increase to 265 million gallons per day. So hear that number a lot, 265. So those are two factors that really influence how we're planning and how we can make it through a drought while still benefiting the environment. Next. So here you see a comparison of the SFPUC with other major water agencies, what they're planning for. Requirement is to plan for your driest five-year period. SFPUC, it's eight and a half years, and something that has never happened. Next. So the question has always been, what about climate change? So the San Francisco PUC invested in a three-quarter of a million dollar study, probably the most complete study done by any water agency. And this was completed a little over a year ago. Next. And what they found was some pretty good news, that they're not expecting bean annual precipitation to change much. We'll have drier years, wetter years. But on a whole, it's on average, it's going to be about the same. Next. And they they looked at 100 years of observed data, 1,100 years of tree ring data, and they ran 25,000 simulated model runs. And these are the worst droughts that they could come up with. Next. And that's where the design drought is. They could not identify a drought as the design drought. So what we're asking for is remove a year from the design droughts. Chances of it happening are still once in the history of human civilization, very unlikely to happen. Next. And this is the big problem. It also shows the solution. The blue is unimpaired flow, natural flow left in the river. And you see during droughts like 2012 to 2016, the SFPUC only, and the irrigation districts only released the amount of water that they're required to. There are base flows. And they hold everything else in the reservoirs. So for those five years, the unimpaired flow averaged 12%. And it really hurt the salmon population and all the other species. In 2017, it was 79%. All that water we conserve, any water that was replaced by recycled water was just stored behind the reservoirs. And it filled, everything filled up and they had to spill. So for months, it was, the river was flowing just below flood stage. And the idea is we got to spread that water out so we don't have five terrible years and then one excessively good year. Next. So we made a lot of progress. In the last three decades, water demand has gone down. You see there for San Francisco PUC, population grew by 8% in the whole service area. But per capita demand declined by 30%. So overall, we're using 25% less water. Next. There was a big investment back in 2008. You probably know because we're all paying for it, the Water System Improvement Program. And that was $4.8 billion plus debt service that we're still paying for quite a while. Next. So next. At the time, demand for 10 years later was 285 million gallons per day. There was a sales cap of 265. That's the number we mentioned earlier before. So that got everyone on board. There were no lawsuits. And then before the drought kicked in, it dropped down to 223 because there was a price signal. The price of water has since then tripled. So people are paying attention. Next, or in just in a couple of weeks for fiscal year 23, 24, you're going to be hit with 11% increase in water charge from the SFPUC. It got down really low during the drought years. Next. And 2018, it wasn't 285, it was 196 million gallons per day. Next. So they're off by 31%. And that's not uncommon. Projections are usually off by about 25%. That's the average. Next. So here, this shows water demand throughout the years. Next. And this was the 87 to 92 drought. That's when the design drought was created. You can see demand was a lot higher at that time. It was also, since then, the SFPUC has adopted a water-first policy, so favoring water supply over hydro power generation, which has really extended the amount of water we can have available. Next. And then there you see on the right, for this will be the ninth year in a row, the water demand has been under 200 million gallons per day. But they're all citing that 265 figure. Next. So these are projections from the Urban Water Management Plan. You can see that they're looking at 236 million gallons per day in 2045. Next. But they have a second set of books. It's the Finance Bureau. That is projecting that sales are going to remain flat for the next 10 years at least. Next. And we got them finally to do a comparison of these two sets of books. And what they found is, well, the Urban Water Management Plan, these are really an outside bound. If everything gets developed and it doesn't, we might have that kind of demand. But with the Finance Bureau, it's as close to accurate as possible because if you're over projecting sales, you're faced with a deficit. Next. So these are historic demand projections. You can see back in the 70s, projection was that sometime it would hit 450 million gallons per day. Next. That's the actual under 200 for the last nine years. But because we were expecting demand to be so high, the SFPUC invested a lot in storage. Next. So they've got their reservoirs on the Tuolumne, the Bay Area reservoirs. Total storage is 1.4 million acre feet. Acre foot is essentially a football field to put deep in water. Next. So at the time that San Francisco declared the water shortage emergency, this was November 2021. Next. They had four and a half years' worth of water in storage, not even close to, to running out. We use million gallons per day for demand. We use acre feet or 1,000 acre feet for storage. So 200 million gallons per day of demand equals 225,000 acre feet per year. So you can look at that number there divided by 225, and that's how many years' worth of water we're in storage. Next. So this is a little complicated, but you see that number down below the middle, 621, that was the amount of water, 1,000 acre feet, we needed this year to fill up the system. And then in the middle there is almost 2 million acre feet. So we've already acquired eight years' worth of water, but we don't have any place to put it. And then in 2017, and we'll start getting closer to that as the snow continues to melt, there was enough water to last 14 years. That was that year when we had to dump, and there were 79% after five terrible years. Next. We did a survey of San Francisco voters a few years ago. We found tremendous support for environmental protections. Next. And also that benefiting the environment was a major driver for water conservation. If you ask people why they conserve water, they're most likely to say for the environment. Next. But it doesn't do that for the reason I pointed out earlier, where water gets hoarded behind dams. Next. And this is the situation where it, next. So in an absolute worst-case scenario, we have a drought much more extreme than any on record. We have, you know, a huge amount of growth. People stopped conserving. We can always purchase water from irrigation districts. Farmers pay $20 an acre foot. We pay $2,000 an acre foot. We will find sellers, and that's not going to happen, certainly not in the lifetime of, of human beings. Next. So just in conclusion, and I really appreciate your patience and time. The state has co-equal goals of protecting, restoring the environment and ensuring reliable water supply. We can easily do that. There's a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there. I don't get very many opportunities to present, so I really appreciate this, but we're always willing to, and we love to present alongside Basca and the SFPUC. That's when I have the most fun. Next. And we'd love you to join us, help restore this incredible ecosystem, the Bay Delta, San Francisco Bay. Palo Alto has endorsed the Bay Delta Plan. The San Mateo County Harbor District has endorsed. We convinced Valley Water to drop their lawsuit once they realized it was really not a great idea. And you're a member of Basca. I think there are a lot of new people on Basca who are making headway as they learn, they care. And we, when we have that dialogue with Basca, we can convince people. Usually it's just two minutes cut off. But we keep persisting. So thank you very much. And I'll stick around and answer any questions.
Again, every time. Thank you very much, Mr. Dreckmeyer. Appreciate that. If you would stay just for a second so that colleagues can ask any questions they might have. I'll just do a quick framework. There may be people in the audience who didn't quite catch your comment at the end. Why are we talking? Why is Burlingame talking about the Bay Delta Plan? And the reason is we sit on a regional board called Basca that determines what to do with water and how much water to take. And the decisions over many of those years, as you saw on the slide, was to take a lot of water out of the Tuolumne. And what the, what environmental groups and people who care about salmon fishermen and ecosystems are asking is that for three or four months, you let the water flow much less impeded so that you keep the river cold and you keep it flushed. And the question is whether we should do that, whether we should let the water flow out to the, to the, to the sea. And Burlingame has a vote. We have a vote at Basca. We may not be in a majority, but we have a vote. We have a voice. Our voice matters. So we wanted, I wanted to make sure people had a chance to hear it. And then probably, I don't have to do this, but I'll tilt my hand, which is, you know, I read, one of the reasons I wanted to invite Mr. Dreckmeyer to come and present to all of us. You know, I read about the Colorado River dying. The river that created the Grand Canyon is dying. And it's dying partly because of climate change, but mostly because of overuse. We have collectively taken too much water out of that river and we're killing it. You can't turn rivers on and off. You certainly can't turn the ecosystems on or off. When they go off, they stay off. And so we can't do anything about the Colorado River. That's not in our purview, but the Tuolumne River is. And to me, this is our chance to do the right thing by the river that matters the most to us, to think about better ways of managing that river. So. So, um, appreciate you being here and I will open it up to colleagues for any questions of Mr. Druckmeyer. Seeing, yeah.
Oh, um, I am counting to be the new representative on Bosc, so it's a pleasure to meet you and I look forward to conversations. Um, I'm in the education mode right now and just getting my arms around things. Um, I would like, uh, question about the Don Pedro because much of the river pass Oceanus, he flows into Don Pedro, uh, which is obviously, uh, TID and MID. But doesn't the SFPUC own a fairly significant portion of that, nearly fifty percent? Is that correct?
Uh, SFPUC paid for nearly fifty percent. Um, not, they paid for more of it than the irrigation districts, but the Army Corps also put in money for flood management. The, the reason they did that is the irrigation districts have senior water rights. Though the, the Raker Act, you might have heard of, uh, twenty thirteen. Um, it acknowledged that the first amount of water coming down the river belongs to the irrigation districts. And then anything over that belongs to the SFPUC. So they have a water bank there, which is water they can't access and they don't own it once it's there. But it's credit, they're prepaying water. And then if you have a dry sequence, they can capture water at Hetch Hetchy that they wouldn't normally be entitled to and they subtract an equal amount from the water bank. So it's a great system. And if you look at graphs, it's storage and Hetch Hetchy, it never gets very low because of the water bank. You see the water bank drop. That's our insurance policy. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to be, make sure I understood that correctly from that.
Sounds like you already know quite a bit. I'm impressed.
I'm some member beach.
I'm, I'm diving in, so.
Thank you for taking a complex, uh, issue and, and presenting us with some really helpful information. So, and probably the answer to this question you've already addressed, but I think the big picture to step back. What do you say to folks that say, you know what, your numbers are, suggest there is enough water, but we're building so much housing, we're built, we're doing so much development. Burlingame has been working incredibly hard. We've got twenty-seven hundred units in the pipeline, multi-unit transit oriented. One number was, we're going to be okay through twenty forty-five. How do you just, um, how do you address that concern that we're developing so much?
Well, if, um, if we do develop everything that we're planning, um, that would be the Urban Water Management Plan numbers. And that, um, graph I showed you of their studies of the droughts and the twenty-five thousand simulated runs, that coincidentally was using two hundred and forty MGD as the baseline to create the severity of the drought. So we make it through. We don't see the design drought, even if all, everything gets built like that. And what I point out is it's actually problematic for housing that they've manufactured these numbers of really high rationing or expensive alternative water supplies because that's what made it into your and other urban water management plans. That number could have been zero rationing. It could have been ninety percent rationing if they were planning for a fifteen-year drought. But, but people who don't like housing, they can point to urban water management plans and say, look, we might already be facing forty percent rationing. We can't afford to build more housing. And if we had reasonable planning for the Tuolumne River, we would also, that same planning would say that we have water available for the housing. So I have no question about having enough water for the housing that we need in the community.
Thank you for that. One other follow-up question with the, with the Bay, um, Delta Plan. Um, you were mentioning safety levers. It made me think, I just want to make sure I understand. Is there, is there anything in the Bay Delta Plan that if the water, if for some reason there was a drought, that there could be a, a backup plan to make a different decision as for terms of the water flow?
The, the state water board can always step in and, and relax conditions and that's a big problem. They do it a lot. And, you know, sometimes it might be necessary, but, I mean, even during the midst of this really, really wet winter, um, the governor wanted to relax requirements like in January. Uh, so that can be done. They can also, um, say to the irrigation districts, look, you have to sell water to the Bay Area at fair market value. And fair market value, which would be the production, the processing and the distribution is about, the value is about a thousand dollars an acre foot. We pay right now two thousand an acre foot. So this, you know, the economic impacts are in the Bay Area. In agriculture areas, it's like they might lose, you know, a few million dollars, um, but it's really minuscule. And so that's, that's the, there's not an official policy that the state will do that. And the SFPUC will say, well, we don't know they're going to do that. Well, are they going to let Silicon Valley and San Francisco go dry so that we can export tomatoes? No.
Quite. I'm going to, um, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to the public. We may or may not call you back, Mr. Druckmeyer. Anybody in the public like to either comment or ask a question? Okay. Okay. Can you take care of that, Madam City Clip?
I'm, yeah, I'm going to allow Nicole from Bosc to speak. Go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon, council members. Uh, this is Nicole Sancola, Chief Executive Officer for Bosc. Um, I just wanted to bring something to your attention that I think is an exciting development. Um, last month in May, the State Board actually began its public review of what is called the Tuolumne River Voluntary Agreement that has been negotiated with San Francisco and the irrigation districts and also the Natural Resources, uh, Agencies in the State of California, Cal EPA, uh, Cowfish and Wildlife, Department of Water Resources, together, put together this proposal that they have submitted to the State Board for evaluation as an amendment to the adopted Bay Delta Plan. And the hope is that the TRVA will be able to protect fish, residents, businesses and communities that depend on the Tuolumne River for reliable supply of high-quality water when and where it is needed. The State Board has actually for many years welcomed voluntary agreements. And these, uh, the regulatory agencies that have worked together with San Francisco, um, and that this to propose this, believe that this proposal will meet the objectives of the Bay Delta Plan. Bosc supports the State Board's environmental review of this alternative. And, um, which we believe, um, could remove the region from the serious water threats um, that would result from the adopted Bay Delta Plan. And I know, Mr. Druckmeyer has provided, you know, some information on that, but, uh, the PUC who owns and operates the regional water system that the one point eight million people that Bosc represents, including this residence in Burlingame, um, has, you know, evaluated it and determined, you know, the impacts to their system and how they would need to operate, um, in that case. And so, you know, Bosc and also our member agencies, uh, testified before the State Board as part of, um, their initial meeting on that, this proposal, urged them, um, to do a robust analysis of that alternative with the hope that it is something that we can all support and get behind. Bosc looks forward to the State Board's thorough and comprehensive review. Um, we believe it's a really valuable step forward to provide increased water flows and habitat for fish in the Tuolumne River and continued protection for the water users who depend on the Tuolumne River. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much, Ms. Sancola, for your work. Uh, are there any other comments in the virtual room?
No, that's the only comment we receive.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Druckmeyer, for taking a complicated, uh, subject and presenting it. Um, we look forward to continuing to research and, um, maybe even wind up having another discussion about, uh, uh, the policy outcomes. I do, um, want to add my own spin to Councilmember Beach's question. It, to me anyway, it's not a ecosystem versus housing. It's the suburbs versus agriculture. And at some point, the state is going to have to realize that if eighty percent of the water is going to ag and of that eighty percent, more than fifty percent goes to growing alfalfa to feed livestock, that that maybe isn't the best way to be using water. Um, so, uh, but that's not for here and now. So, thank you very much. We will, uh, move on to, um, our next item, which is why I think a number of people are here, and that is, I believe, public comment. It is. So this takes us to the point in our, uh, meeting when we, um, open the microphone to the public. This is for items that are not on the agenda. If you want to comment on an agenda item, I'd ask you to wait for that item. Uh, because this is, um, un-agendized, we're not allowed to discuss whatever comments might be put in front of us, but we listen carefully and we take note. Um, as with last time, what I'll ask people to do, I know we have a bunch of cards. I'm not going to try to read the cards or stack certain order. I'd ask you to just sort of get in line and, and, um, comment and we'll hold. Actually, let me just tag a quick show of hands. How many people would like to speak in public comment? So about, about five or six is what I'm seeing? Okay, so, I mean, last time, I think in, in fairness, I'm going to keep it to two minutes is what, what we did last time. If you need to go a little bit longer, I'll let you go. Okay. But, um, in, in respecting everyone's time, we'll try to keep it at two minute. Uh, and so with that, I will open it up for public comment. And I'd ask again, if you want to make a public comment, just sort of slide in and step up to the microphone. Who wants to go first?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Sam Johnson. I'm a supervisor in the Water Division and I've been an employee with the city since two thousand and one. I'm here tonight to address an issue that has been ongoing for the past several years, actually even longer. Employee retention. In the Water Division, we lost three valuable maintenance workers over the span of two months recently. This was a big hit for us since we only have seven maintenance workers in our division. Almost half our maintenance positions were vacant. In twenty-one years with the Water Division, I've never seen that many vacancies in the Water Division at one time. Watching the previous council meeting from two weeks ago, listening to my fellow union members, I noticed the same issue was going on in the Street Sewer and Storm Division as well as the Park Department. Training a new employee takes years in order to gain confidence to work on the water distribution system. With twenty-one years' experience, even I'm still learning some, some things occasionally. Spending an extensive time training and educating new employees just to find out they seek employment elsewhere can be frustrating. After sitting down and speaking to each of those employees who decided to leave our division, it simply came down to one reason, higher pay. They, they liked the place they work. They love their coworkers and they really enjoy providing top-tier customer service to the city, the residents of Burlingame. But unfortunately, the money was not enough to make ends meet. In the past three years, the city is averaging two recruitments per year in order to try and keep positions full left by others who seek a higher wage elsewhere. We are no longer competitive with other cities' wages when it comes to wages resulting in low numbers for individuals applying for a position. I remember a time when we'd fill our large training room, and it's fairly large, over the course of the weekend for people taking the civil service test as part of the application process. Those numbers have not been seen in quite some time. The city at one time used to be proud to say we were top three in the market, but that no longer exists. We need to make our way back to that. We need to be more competitive in wages. We need to retain our employees. We, we need twelve, we need twelve percent just to get back to a level playing field. Your employees deserve it. And one quick note, we're currently in the recruitment process right now.
Thank you very much for getting us. Can we, there we go.
Good evening. My name is Solomon Takapu. I have been employed with the city of Burlingame for seven years now. As a dedicated city worker and representative of my colleagues, I believe it is crucial to address the need for a salary increase based on our job classification. In my seven years of working with the city of Burlingame, our department has consistently demonstrated exceptional performance and achieved remarkable results in fulfilling our duties and responsibilities. The dedication, expertise and hard work exhibited by our team have contributed significantly to the overall success of the department and the city as a whole. In recent years, the cost of living has been steadily rising, affecting our employees to meet, uh, ability to meet their financial obligations and maintain a reasonable standard of living. It is essential to recognize that fair compensation not only acknowledges our valuable contributions, but also serves as incentive for continued excellence and dedication to our work. Additionally, it has come to my attention that comparative data shows our current salaries are not commensurate with those of other similar job classifications in neighboring cities or comparable positions in, in the private sector. The wage disparity has led to loss of talented individuals who have had to seek better compensation elsewhere, negatively impacting our department's continuity and overall productivity. I am confident that a fair and equitable, uh, increase in our salary will not only serve as a recognition of our hard work, but also foster employee morale, motivation and overall job satisfaction. It will also attract and retain top talent, ensuring the continued success of our department in fulfilling the vital role that it has for our city. I believe that by working together, we can achieve a favorable outcome that is both beneficial to the employees and the long-term success of our department. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening, council. My name is John Mulwalt Alialo. Uh, I serve as your street and sewer response. I'm the first smiling face that, uh, the neighbors see if they have, if they have any issues when it comes to street or sewer. Excuse me. I'm here Monday through Friday, six thirty to four. Um, so I'm the smiling face. I started back in January twenty eighteen, um, but I didn't start with part, uh, with the street and sewer division. I actually started with parks department. Um, I currently live in Daly City. My wife's family's from South San Francisco. And having my kids play in parks in Daly City and in South San Francisco, I can say that Burlingame Parks are top tier. When the pandemic hit, um, many of us were sent home for the first couple of weeks when the whole world was shut down. Then we came back to work. We showed up after two weeks, business as usual. I'm married with four kids and at the time during the pandemic, my kids were ages sixteen, twelve, ten and nine. We had no clue what COVID had in store. We didn't know what it was, but we showed up. When the storms come and cities flood, we show up. One Sunday, uh, the Niners were playing, I think the Eagles a couple of years ago. You know, it was storming outside and I was watching with my kids. And I knew that my coworkers, my brothers were here and their brothers and sisters, um, were here during the storm. And my family was like, Dad, don't look at your phone. If it goes off, then I'm going to go. Um, supervisor at the time, Rick Horn, texted me, hey man, where are you at? Jumped in my car, drove through, uh, what is it, two eighty, the storm, it was south, right next to Ceremony, it was flooded. Everybody had to shoot all, all the way to the left to get past the flood because that whole part of the, the freeway had flooded. My kids are texting me, hey, Dad, you all right? I didn't respond until I actually got here, like half hour, forty-five minutes later. I showed up because the gentleman in, was there, showed up. Please, council, we need you to show up for us. When you need us, in the past, we showed up. In the future, we will show up. Please, we request that you show up for us this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind.
Good evening, council. My name is Dante Campagna. I am the sewer repair lead worker for the city of Burlingame. As our sewers, uh, as our sewer division, we operate almost one hundred miles of sewer mains in addition to over thirty miles of sewer laterals. Those thirty miles of sewer laterals are made up of over eight thousand five hundred individual connections serving almost thirty thousand citizens, not including the numerous amount of shoppers and travelers we receive throughout the day. Burlingame is the only city on the peninsula that takes responsibility for the lower sewer lateral. San Mateo, Millbrae, Hillsborough, San Carlos, San Bruno, Palo Alto, Foster City, Belmont. Foster City, Belmont, Daly City, Pacifica, South San Francisco, and East Palo Alto. None of those cities take responsibility for the lower sewer lateral. That burden is on the homeowners. The citizens of Burlingame have received a very high quality of service, regardless of the time of day, on weekends, holidays, in the dead of night, rain or shine. I'm asking the Council to please support a fair contract and fair wages for the city's hard-working Ask Me employees. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, children. My name is Chris Mejia. I'm a lead worker for the Parks Department and worked for the city of Burlingame for 16 years. Always been grateful and fortunate for my job and I felt a sense of pride knowing I represent. I made a commitment to my family, myself, and the community to work hard and that I would make sure that the city did not regret employing me. In my opinion, we provide a high standard of service for the city. I feel we are a reflection of how the city looks. Our service is to keep everything green and clean for the residents and visitors who always come to spend their time in Burlingame. I say this because my family and friends who work, live, and play sports in other cities, all on the peninsula and even further around the Bay Area. I've seen their cities, been there, parks, streets, downtowns. It doesn't even come close to the city of Burlingame. Why, in my opinion? It's in back here right here. It's the people and the employees of what this city is about. Burlingame is a quality of life that its residents choose to live in Burlingame because of the community, the schools, parks, locations, trees, and the beauty of the city. I feel the employees are a huge part of that. Even during the pandemic and more recently, the unprecedented storms that affected us in many ways, our employees as first responders, you're looking at all that right there, made sure that our residents' way of living was not drastically impacted. I believe our employees felt a sense of pride in that. Now, other cities are getting compensated a lot more than we are and it feels like we're being undervalued. I definitely feel like that. So we are asking at least the wages to keep us at the cost of living and give us what we've earned. I bring my family to support me because they got my back and they're here to represent. Sorry for the noise, little three-year-old, but still putting it down. I never thought I'd be, had to be in front of you in the position defending what I feel I've earned in my 16 years. And for all of us. It's hard to make ends meet for my family, family of four, my wife, for all our family. I'm just hoping that the Council, that you guys will take in consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any other comments?
Hello, Council. Some of you may recognize me. I'm a former employee and I'm here as a testament to what they are talking about that you guys are having a retention problem. I worked here for seven years. I loved this city. It was a great city to work for, great community. But, you know, like they're saying, this is revolving door for people to come in, get trained, and go to another city, find another opportunity. When I started working here, first four years, I never thought I'd leave. I thought I was going to retire here. You could ask, I had a sick leave bank that I never touched because I was going to use it for my retirement. You could put up to 160 hours towards your retirement of service credit. Like, I'm going to retire here, I'm going to put my time in, retire. It's just, there's becoming better opportunities to go somewhere else. And I think you should just appreciate what you have. You know, I've known, two of us went to Foster City, took our talents somewhere else. And it's just a retention problem that needs to be addressed. You guys need to realize, I've been gone for less than a year and I see eight new faces out there. Less than a year, eight new faces. That should say something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Freddie Linares and I am automotive mechanic for the City of Birmingham. Take care of all the city vehicles and their fleet. Me and the lead mechanic take care of the whole fleet. We service every vehicle from oil changes to major repairs. And when my fellow coworkers need their vehicle to go for a duty call, a main break, a tree fell, take care of the residents of Burlingame. If their car is not ready to go, that's a big problem for, for me and the lead mechanic. So we do our best to maintain the vehicles and sorry, a little nervous.
Lost the track. Take your time.
And me and the lead mechanic, well, we just take pride in what we do for the residents. And I just want you guys to look at us and take care of us the way we take care of the residents because they can't do their job if I can't do mine and they can't take care of the residents and if I don't have a vehicle for them. So just help us out, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mayor Brownrigg and Council members. Richard Stevens, Lead Worker in the Water Division and 17-year city employee. I would like to talk to you tonight about priorities. It has often seemed to me that city councils over the years have treated paying the city employees fairly as discretionary spending. You know, something you can do, you know, when times are good, but if there's any hint of any kind of economic slowdown, it's, you know, it's just not on the board and, you know, we can't do it this time. And I think that's, you know, an unfortunate way of seeing paying the people who provide the core services that the city provides. The city is a service organization. It's what, what it is. That's what all these people in the room do. You know, but if it's not already identified future capital improvement projects, like a train grade separation or El Camino power line projects, which thankfully I read city manager's comments in last year's CAFR are now fully funded. So we're good on that one. But if it's not that type of thing, it's, you know, it's needing to strengthen our reserves. It's, it's always something that, that gets us these one and two and zero and present cost of living increases each year. You know, strengthening reserves is always a smart move. But is it right to do so at the expense of fair and competitive wages for those who provide the core central services of the city? It comes to a matter of priorities and we are asking you to please prioritize competitive wages so that we can continue to provide the citizens of Burlingame with excellent core services they deserve. I have a lot of other things. I'm kind of nerdy and I'll talk about numbers. Maybe I'll, I'll skip all this, but I just want to remind you of your very healthy unrestricted fund balances that you have. General Fund, we see on page 21, 22 of last year's report is 32 million. 57% of our bargaining unit do not even work for the General Fund. We work for various enterprises' funds. And after subtracting for their capital improvement projects and future pension liabilities and whatnot, the Water Fund has 16 million unrestricted, sewer 9.3, solid waste 3.8, parking 8.7, Building Fund 13 million, Internal Services Fund 11.2 million. So there's $61.9 million of unrestricted reserve funds. So once again, it comes down to a matter of priorities and we are asking you to please prioritize competitive wages so that we can continue to provide the citizens of Burlingame with the excellent service they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
And I would like to thank I know this is somewhat disruptive of your normal flow of meetings. I want to really appreciate you all for letting us speak here. And I'm sorry we left early last time and we will probably leave early today. But most of these guys work at 6:30 and some of them work at four and many have an hour to commute homes. So I will probably be leaving. Great pleasure for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Mario Rodriguez. I work as a park maintenance clerk for the City of Burlingame. I worked for the city for two years. Because of our wages aren't being kept up with inflation, it's been harder and harder to make ends meet. We deserve fair pay that keeps up with the cost of living. And all I'm asking is the Council to please support a fair contract to recognize the city's hard-working Ask Me employees. Before I go, I just wanted to share some data that you may already know. 109 calls were received in 24 hours. We were dispatched to 45 locations. 14 were private trees, 24 were tree failures occurred, and 20 trees alone were just at Bayside Park. Also, not to forget, we were working with Public Works to get more than 100 soundbags to work at Mills Canyon Mudslide. We showed up day in, day out, in the rain, at night. And all I'm asking is for you to please respect and understand that we were hardworking and all we want is a fair wage and what we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for being. Are there any other public comments? So just before we move on. We do? Yeah, I
Their emails were sent to thepubliccomment@burlingame.org.
Okay.
And we do have one individual with their handouts. I'll start with Steven. You can unmute yourself. Steven, I will come back to you. Our first email is from Joy. She says, "My name is Joy Sanfilippo. I have been with the Burlingame Police Department in the Records Department for over 23 years. In the past, we have gotten good raises and fair contracts. During COVID-19, the city asked that we take only a 2% raise for one year to help them out and we were unable to negotiate for our normal three-year contract. Also during COVID-19, the front office was open for regular business hours and times to accommodate our Burlingame citizens for any service provided by the police department. I ask that you consider a fair and reasonable contract for our city employees due to the high rise in inflation." Our next email is from Lisa. She states, "My name is Lisa Rankator and I have worked for the City of Burlingame for 23 years. I have basically seen the economic roller coaster go from booms to bust several times over during my time here with the city. That said, the economy was quite good for many years leading up to 2020 and the fact that our salaries have dropped so far behind during those times and did not even keep up with normal inflation is distressing to see in black and white. Not only have our salaries not kept up with inflation in the admin section, but we are also far behind other cities as far as salary range. Some positions are behind as much as 6%. For fiscal years 11, 12 to 13, 14, we recommended a 1% COLA increase per year. Keep in mind, we pay 7.5% of our medical premiums and 1% of cities' PERS on top of our own 8% PERS deduction. So some years, we really received no raise at all. This coupled with the fact that many of our neighboring cities chose to reward their staff with premium pay from relief money received during COVID and Burlingame did not is embarrassing also to see in black and white. There was a point in time that the city pledged to keep Burlingame salaries in the top three on the peninsula, but that has not been the case for some time now. I can speak for the Finance Department and the difficulty that we have had recruiting and retaining staff the past several years. The pandemic may have played into this in some ways, but not totally. For example, Burlingame has had recruitments for positions that other neighboring cities also have had at the same time and Burlingame did not have as many applicants. I would assume that this is due to our salaries not being competitive. Our Water Business License Office has been unable to recruit a part-time office assistant and have had three recruitments in the past nine months without success. We have asked if this position could be a part-time benefited position in the hope that we could attract qualified applicants. We're told no. This position remains vacant. In 2019, the city launched their new financial management system, which was supposed to make our jobs easier and faster, but is sadly the opposite. The majority of what we do on the system takes twice as long and it is a daily struggle to get things done with the level of staff that we have in our department. 10 years ago, our water office had three full-time accounting assistants and one working manager. In 2013, the working manager position was cut and the water office never gained another FT. Please show your support to the Ask Me admin and maintenance staff by keeping our salaries competitive so that we can attract and retain staff." Our next email comes from Joe. He says, "My name is Joe Balabon. I have been a Burlingame employee since 2014. Burlingame initially hired me as a parking enforcement officer and currently I'm a parking systems technician. Although I am from Santa Cruz, California, I learned to love the City of Burlingame as my adopted hometown. I'm writing to you today to comment on the pending negotiations for the new Ask Me employees contract that affects me because it affects my fellow employees and affects the City of Burlingame agenda. As you are most likely aware, the cost of living in the Bay Area is skyrocketing, including but not limited to gasoline, food, bridge fares, insurance, rent, childcare, food, entertainment, educational costs, utilities, credit card debt, interest, mortgage debt, interest, and much more. For employees such as myself, it is becoming increasingly difficult to make ends meet. Therefore, the terms of the pending contract are crucial to me and my family's well-being. It is upon that basis that I strongly encourage the City Council to meet the Ask Me compensation request as follows. A 12.8% COLA increase during the first year of the contract, a 2% to 6% COLA increase during the second year, and a 2% to 6% increase in the third year. In addition, I understand that the City of Burlingame receives substantial COVID relief funds from the state of California to further compensate all city employees. I fully support the Ask Me demand for a reasonable portion of those funds. Such increases in our compensation would allow all of us to continue to work in the City of Burlingame without the added pressures and stresses of an uncertain and inflationary economy. Thank you for your consideration." The next email I received is from
How many more emails do we have?
We have four on this topic and then two others just on general terms. Dear Council members, my name is Cecilia Hernandez and I have worked for the Burlingame Police Department as a records clerk for almost 24 years. I'm also bilingual and speak Spanish, which is very beneficial to the city and was very disappointed when hearing from a member of the city that Spanish is not really spoken in Burlingame. I've commuted from the East Bay my entire career. I've always been proud to work for the city. The police department was open and accessible to all of our Burlingame residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. I've become aware that other cities where Ask Me, the union, received anywhere from 4,800 to 5,500 premium pay for working during the pandemic. Burlingame should also recognize their employees for doing the same. As for the pay increase, I feel that Burlingame has not met the standards for pay, for fair pay in years. We deserve fair pay to keep up with the current cost of living. As a longtime City of Burlingame employee, I'm asking the City Council to support the city's hard-working Ask Me employees. Next email is from Amri. My name is Amri Castanatnada. I work as a police records clerk for the City of Burlingame. I've worked in Burlingame for four years. My job requires to assist the citizens of Burlingame. Our job is crucial for the city, not only because we assist citizens for various different services, but most importantly, we assist residents that need translation services in Spanish. In the Records Department, we have two certified Spanish translators and we translate about 80 to 90% of our debt. We would appreciate that the city recognizes how crucial Spanish is in Burlingame. We deserve a fair pay that keeps us with the cost of living. I'm asking the Council to support a fair contract to recognize the city's hard-working Ask Me employees. The next email comes from Michael. He says, "My name is Michael Thixton and I have worked for the Burlingame Police Department for seven years, part-time and full-time. I love working for the city and police department. However, it is disconcerting that city employees are being appreciated for what we do. We are 12.8% behind. We haven't received a raise in years. But the cost of living and inflation makes it hard to live comfortably with our current pay scale. An ample amount of city employees live across the bay and commute back and forth every day. I had to move back in with my brother due to high cost of rent. I couldn't make it financially, so I am imploring you to rate, raise our wages to what we deserve. Show us appreciation for the hard work we do. We all even worked during the COVID pandemic and didn't receive any type of premium pay compared to other cities. But gift cards were given to the citizens of the city during that time and the police department were the ones giving them out. We deserve better. The city needs to do better. We struggle to make ends meet. Please give us what we deserve with better pay and COVID premium pay like other cities received. We deserve fair pay. So I'm asking the Council to support the city's Ask Me employees and show appreciation and gratitude." We deserve fair pay, so I'm asking the council to support the city's Ask Me employees and show appreciation and gratitude. Our next email comes from Dicky. He says, good evening, I'm Dicky Vaplin- Vaplin. I worked for the Park and Rec Department since nineteen eighty-six, and I am a current resident. In May twenty-twenty-two, a coworker of mine was on the front page of the San Mateo Daily Journal. You see, for quite a few years now, when a tree falls due to a storm or old age, not all of them end up being shipped up and hauled away. James, with the help of other coworkers, turned some into fairy houses, wishing well, my favorite park munchies. These are enjoyed by many every day. Go to any other city on the peninsula and tell me how many other cities do the same. The park department a few years back started the mud run in which park employees continued to add new and exciting areas to the obstacle course. This has only grown in popularity and brings in more and more revenues for the city, just like movie night and campout night, which employees take time to get everything ready. The Bachi Bowl Courts in Washington Park, another revenue for the COB. It was installed by park employees and continues to be maintained by parks employees since twenty-thirteen. The COB ball fields also obtained by city employees. During the terrible storms of twenty-two to twenty-three, twenty-three, we did everything we could to make sure the fields were playable for kids' baseball and the adult softball league. During that time, I looked at other cities' websites. What I found was other cities saying it's going to be another two weeks until our fields are ready for play. And I'll be honest, that gave me a ton of satisfaction, knowing that my city, my coworkers and I were able to accomplish what the other cities around the bay couldn't do. I've been here since the days of Mayor Bud Harrison and Mayor Rosalie O'Mahony, and they appreciated what we did and compensated us nicely. I hope you'll do the same. Thank you. We have a few more emails. This next one comes from Anne Kegren. She says, uh, I saw the closed city council agenda included an item related to Ask Me labor negoti- I would like to commend the city staff and city council for your ability to maintain a balanced budget for the city of Burlingame. Over the years, the council has built reserves, and this is one of the reasons the city has been able to survive the economic downfall during COVID. As you all know, hotel TOT fell dramatically during the past two and a half years, and we have many small businesses that experienced major economic challenges during this time period. The council needs to continue their fiscally reserved approach, especially during these trying and unknown economic times. It is essential that all jobs are preserved and that we avoid future layoffs if possible. This can only be obtained by your continual fiscal, uh, stewardship. The city of Burlingame is quite fortunate to have wonderful and dedicated employees, but in order to keep them, the council needs to keep in mind our fiscal vitality. Thank you and have a good evening. We have a few more. Our next email comes from Manita. He says, I wanted to thank and acknowledge the mayor for being actively involved in the California Bike Way Contract, for being transparent and constructive and taking up the baton for this important legacy project on behalf of the city and council. Despite the fact that I flagged issues back at the council meeting in February, I still believe that this is a good project. Many of your constituents and even the businesses think the same. As with everything else, the details are where opinions are forced to diverge. One thing in particular you may consider is the replacement parking. Not all parking is the same. As currently designed by the city, this project will remove about twelve spaces on just that one block alone. But these are the most productive, highest quality parking spaces there are on California Drive. These are metered parking spaces, which in addition to providing revenue to the city, also provides turnover for the businesses. These are two-hour, one-hour, and a half-hour parking spaces. The one space can be used by ten to twenty different customers. They're being replaced by unrestricted parking, so the new spaces will just end up just like the rest of the parking on that side of the street. RVs, auto body shops, storage, and cars that don't move for weeks at a time. In addition to being inaccessible and across the way, they truly will not benefit the impacted businesses. There's even the outstanding question of the legality of parking on that side of the street according to the city code. So there's plenty to consider, although it is likely that you were all already aware of this when you voted unanimously to proceed in February. I'm sure it was not easy to decide to remove the parking or furlough parking meter revenues, but it's still their option to keep the parking, keep the turns, and keep the bike lanes. That option is still available. Whatever you decide, these are undoubtedly tough decisions, and it is always difficult to make in four decisions that promote the greater public good. Thank you for ma- making them on a regular basis. Um, I believe that's the end, and I don't see any hands raised, so I think we're now. McIntyre? No. Oh, I got one more. Sorry, sir. Um, this comes from McIntyre. He states, the statistics that were provided by the city of Burlingame's annual fiscal report indicates that our number of street and sewer service calls that we respond to has risen from three hundred in twenty nineteen to eight fifty in twenty twenty-two. Our day-to-day tasks have almost tripled in that time, and we have we have not had a sufficient pay increase to show for it. Um, so those are those, and I have one hand raised, so we'll try with Steven again. Steven, you can now unmute yourself.
How you doing? Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time, Council. My name is Steve Papas. Uh, I've been a parks maintenance worker for over seven years. Um, for every single one of those years, I have had to have at least another job, uh, other than the one I have now, and that is either, uh, working at Village Host Bar and Grill, which I know every single one of you guys have been to, and also being a coach over at Burlingame High School. Uh, I also find it very, very embarrassing that we have to have a former employee come and let you guys know what's going on, um, in our own city. Um, and and all we ask is that you guys support us and be in agreement with a fair contract, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Um, and I think no more public comments.
Okay, well, that was a valiant effort, Adam City Clerk. Thank you very much for reading those into the record. I do want to reassure anybody who writes to us that we all read the emails when they first come in, um, but it's good to have it in the public record. Um, we are going to move on, but I wanted to say just a couple of, um, quick things. First of all, I appreciate all of you guys being here, taking your time. This is time away from your families, and we we understand that. Uh, I want to thank the kids for being here. Your dad did great. It's really nice to see you here supporting your dad. Um, we know what a great job everybody does in this city. We're super proud of the of the quality of life here, and we understand that it's the workforce who helps deliver that quality of life. So we're really appreciative, and we do understand that. As you guys know, we're not allowed to comment, but I spent the first third of my career as a negotiator, and I learned a long time ago that negotiations need to happen offline. So even if we were allowed to comment, we shouldn't comment, because that's the way negotiations happen. They happen in rooms where you can talk honestly and you can trade ideas, and ultimately you get to shake hands, and that's where I know we'll get to. So I can't address specifics. I'm not going to. I know, my time is up.
Two-minute warning.
Yeah, the city attorney is calling me in. Um, but I did, I did want to share one other point, which is, um, you know, we are proud of the fact that we do have reserves. We got hit really hard by COVID. Most cities in the United States did not get hit as hard as our city did, because most cities don't get more than a third of their revenue from our hotels who are here tonight. We went from in the full year of, uh, our budget before COVID hit, we made twenty-nine million dollars from hotel tax. That's off the seventy-five million dollar general fund, okay? I understand they're enterprise funds, so I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about the general fund, which is, which still pays for an awful lot of what we do, what the city delivers. We lost twenty-nine million out of seventy-five million. We didn't lay off anybody. We didn't furlough anybody. We didn't cut anybody's pay. The next, the full year of COVID, when the hotel taxes had fallen, fell to five million. We lost twenty-four million dollars out of a seventy-five million dollar budget. And the reason that we didn't do any furloughs and the reason that our citizens didn't see any knock on service is because you guys did a great job, but also because we didn't lay anybody off and we didn't furlough. That was important to us. What we did do is spend down all of our reserves. So that's the situation that we're in. It's just a matter of fact. But I know with goodwill, because I've been through a million negotiations, that we will get to a good answer. And that's as much as I can say tonight, but we do appreciate you being here, and we appreciate the work you do every day showing up for the people of Burlingame. So with that, I am going to move on to the rest of the agenda. You guys feel free to listen. Uh, you've heard about water supply. Maybe there'll be something else that'll interest you. But if you guys want to take off, we understand that, too. If you do, I'm going to wait just a minute for everyone to take off.
What? I'm going to go pull down now. Take your jacket off?
What's wrong with the food?
Hot, the butter's hot. Can you get my butt?
I am hot.
It's not, it's not the jacket. I know, it's not.
The heat up?
It's not froze. I don't, I don't think it's hot. And I'm. Sorry about that. It's coming on.
Okay. Thank you very much for being patient. That takes us to the consent calendar. We have a number of items on consent. Would any colleague like to pull any item off for further discussion? I see none. Adam City Clerk, is there anybody in the audience who wants to pull an item?
I don't have any emails to pull an item, so we're good to go.
In which case I entertain a motion to approve items eight, eight, I mean, ten A through G.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of items A through, uh, ten A through ten, ten G.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ortiz, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Uh, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Beach?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colson?
Yes.
Mayor Brownright?
Yes. Okay, consent is, um, cleared, and that takes us to public hearings, and this is introduction of an ordinance to establish the San Francisco Peninsula Tourism Marketing District. And I am now out of practice. Do we read the ordinance first before we start?
Um, I think that we will receive the staff report first.
Okay, let's have the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are, um, in step two, I believe, of a, uh, multi-part process to establish um, a new San Francisco Peninsula Tourism Marketing District. This is taking the place of the Tourism Business Improvement District that our, um, friends, all of our friendly hoteliers out here have been operating under for quite some time. So I'll just go through the staff report really quickly. Um, they know a lot more about this than I do. So, um, I might ask John Hutar at some point to come up if I get stuck, but, um, let me just do a little brief background for our vast viewing audience at home. Uh, in two thousand and one, the San Mateo County Tourism Business Improvement District was formed, uh, pursuant to the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine. That is a mouthful, um, and we did that by ordinance. Uh, and the San Mateo County Silicon Valley Convention Visitors Bureau is now, um, doing business as the San Francisco Peninsula. Um, and San Mateo County Lodging Businesses, so all of our nice hoteliers, um, throughout the county, are looking to modernize the T bed by forming a new district under a different law. So they were under the, um, Park Game Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine. They're now, um, going to be subject to the Property and Business Improvement District Law of nineteen ninety-four. That's all a lot of, um, detail that probably most of us don't really need to know about, but, um, just to set kind of the stage there. So the SFP, uh, TMD is the Benefit Assessment District. It's proposed to create a revenue source to help fund marketing and sales promotion efforts for San Francisco Peninsula area lodging businesses. That is super important, as, uh, the mayor just mentioned. Hotel tax is, uh, an important revenue source for all of us cities, and it's important for all of our, um, friends in the hotel business to be able to attract visitors, uh, hopefully repeat visitors, um, to stay in all of the wonderful hotels in the county. Um, this approach that they're trying to do now has been used successfully in other destination areas throughout the state to improve tourism and drive additional room nights for, um, assessed lodging businesses. So this, um, proposed, uh, Tourism Marketing District includes all lodging businesses located within the boundaries of the cities of Belmont, Brisbane, Burlingame, Palo Alto, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Menlo Park, Millbrae, Pacifica, Redwood City, San Bruno, San Carlos, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and then the unincorporated area of the county. Um, the San Francisco Peninsula, so the Convention Visitors Bureau and the Lodging Business Owners, decided to pursue formation of this, um, TMD in order to create a revenue source devoted to marketing areas, a tourist meeting and event destination. Um, if established, this new district would generate, uh, almost eleven million dollars on an annual basis for promotion of travel and tourism specific to this peninsula area, so that is very important. Um, Tourism Marketing Districts utilize the efficiencies of private sector operation, the market-based promotion of tourism. The Special Assessment Districts allow lodging business owners to organize their efforts to increase tourism. Uh, the lodging business owners within the district will fund the district, and those funds are used to provide services that are desired by and benefit lodging businesses. So the funds can't be diverted for other government programs, so we, um, we are involved, but we don't, uh, we are really not a part of it. We're just sort of the agent that's helping with the formation of all of this. Um, the districts are customized to fit the needs of each destination. They allow for a wide range of services, including destination marketing, tourism promotion, and sales lead generation. They are designed, created, and governed by those who will pay the assessment, so all of the hotels, uh, are part of this, and they provide a stable funding source for tourism promotion. Again, very important for this area. Um, they, we have a management district plan that you saw last time this came before you. So back, uh, I guess it was one meeting ago, you, uh, adopted a resolution of intention or resolution of consent, asking all the other cities to come along for the ride. Um, and so the management district plan was, uh, part of that packet. It includes the proposed boundary of the whole district, a service plan and budget, and a proposed means of governance. Again, it includes all of the lodging businesses located within all of those cities I mentioned earlier, as well as the unincorporated area of the county. Uh, the annual assessment rate is one and a half percent of gross short-term sleeping room rental revenue for lodging businesses with five thousand square feet or more of dedicated meeting space, and point seven-five percent for all other lodging businesses within boundaries. Um, assessments are not collected on stays of more than thirty consecutive days. Stays provided to airline cockpit and/or cabin crews pursuant to an agreement between the hotel and the airline. Um, employees of the state or federal government, if room charges are paid directly by the employing agency, uh, et cetera. Um, this is, uh, proposed to have a five-year life. It was, takes a little time to get all the paperwork in order, so it actually not begin until October first, twenty twenty-three, or as soon as possible thereafter. It ends five years after that. Um, the, it can all be renewed, and so hopefully it'll be successful and will be renewed uh, once per year, beginning on the anniversary, so, uh, October-ish of twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's a thirty-day period in which business owners paying fifty percent or more of the assessment made protest and being, begin proceedings to terminate. So there is an out clause if folks find that this is not working for them. Uh, similar to our role under the old system, we're responsible for collecting the assessments on a monthly basis, um, from each lodging business. We are going to be paid a fee equal to one percent of the amount of the assessment collected or a flat fee of sixty thousand, which whichever is greater, and so that is actually an increase, um, to help cover our costs over what we were receiving under the old model. Um, and so that will help us cover our costs of collection administration. Um, and so there are, uh, some formation processes here. Uh, we did the resolution of intention hearing and resolution requesting consent. That was done. Uh, they went out with petitions. Um, uh, fifty-eight point twelve percent of the total, uh, assessment approved this, so sixty-five lodging businesses. Um, so folks are, uh, on board with this. Um, the, uh, the Convention Visitors Bureau, sorry, the San Francisco Peninsula, um, sent out a written notice to all owners of lodging businesses, letting them know this was happening. Um, and there's a mandatory forty-five-day period in which owners may protest. We're now at the public hearing and introduction slash first reading of the ordinance phase. Um, we'll come back to you at the next meeting for adoption of the ordinance. Um, and then you'll also adopt a resolution of formation. I will, uh, turn it over to the city attorney in one sec to talk about, um, the other next step that we need to do, um, which has to do with, um, dissolving the old district. Uh, and I think that is it. Um, I'll let the city attorney talk about what other next steps we need to do, and then I'll just run through the steps that we need you to do tonight. We do have, um, John and several hoteliers in the audience. Um, if they want to speak, that would be delightful. Um, and so, Michael, you want to talk about?
Sure. Thank you. Um, so, um, as the city manager had mentioned, um, we are currently, uh, the, the current district is formed under what was known as the eighty-nine law, and that was formed by ordinance. Um, so all of the steps that she just mentioned was the formation of the new. Um, so all of the steps that she just mentioned was the formation of the new, uh, district, um, under the ninety-four law. We will have to come back to you, um, uh, later to do the housekeeping of dissolving the current eighty-nine, um, uh, T-bid. That will also be done by ordinance. Since it's formed by ordinance, you have to dissolve it by ordinance. Um, we want to make sure that the ninety-four bid, um, is in place and has passed all the appeals period before we go through that process of dissolving the current ordinance to make sure there's no gap in coverage there. Um, so the timeline in your staff report talks about the formation period. Um, but we will come, this is just sort of a, you know, heads up that we will come back to you in the future to do the housekeeping of dissolving the eighty-nine district.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so we have a few steps for you under the recommendation, so receive the staff report. We did that. Ask any questions of staff. Uh, Michael and I are available, and again, um, Mr. Hutar is here. Uh, we'll have you conduct a public hearing and then discuss the ordinance and let us know whether you want to bring it back for a second reading and adoption.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff on that? Excellent staff report. I see none. Um, so that means I'll move to public hearing.
But before public hearing, because the, uh, title of the ordinance wasn't on the agenda, I need you to ask me to read it.
Would you please?
Way further. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burlingame, establishing chapter six point five five, San Francisco Peninsula Tourism Marketing District of Title Six of the Burlingame Municipal Code regarding the establishment of the San Francisco Peninsula Tourism Marketing District. Sequel determination exempt pursuant to state sequel guidelines, sections fifteen three seven eight and fifteen zero six one B three.
Another lesson that cities would never be good at titling movies. Thank you for that. Uh, so that then takes us to the public hearing.
You still, you need to wave, sorry. One last step. We're going old.
Wave for the reading.
Sorry.
And open it.
Motion, motion.
Motion by the Vice Mayor to wave for the reading.
Open the.
Open it, yes, and seconded by Councilmember Ortiz, I think.
Yes.
So if we could do roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Aye.
Councilmember Beach?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colson?
Yes.
Mayor Brownrigg?
Yes. Now, now, I can open it up for public hearing if anybody would like to offer any insights or remarks. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Brownrigg, Vice Mayor Colson, council members. My name is Feda Aiden, and I am the general manager of the Embassy Suites Hotel in the City of Burlingame and Embassy Suites Hotel by Hilton in the City of South San Francisco. I'm here tonight with a number of my colleagues in support of establishing a new tourism marketing district, which would replace the current T-bid. Uh, prior to COVID, we enjoyed a tremendous amount of success in our area. Corporate business was bountiful. Uh, plenty of, uh, compression, uh, coming from south of us, from San Jose, and north of us, from San Francisco. Hotels in our region outperformed essentially the entire country by almost twenty percent of the occupancy and almost hundred dollars in rate. With those type of, uh, strength in our numbers, our hotels were doing great, and we needed very little help from marketing dollars. Well, as it has changed for all of us, COVID's changed the region's travel landscape tremendously. One of the very well-known names in the, uh, meeting business, Moscone Center, their business is down forty to sixty percent until the year twenty thirty. And any business or any compression coming from San Jose is essentially non-existent today for our hoteliers. And, um, prior to COVID, we used to get about thirty to forty weeks of compression from north and south of us, from different conventions that was happening, and that's down to a handful today. The coveted business travel, which used to arrive on a Sunday or a Monday on our hotels and used to stay three to four days, and usually check out Thursdays and Fridays, just doesn't happen today. We are fortunate as hoteliers to have one-night stays possibly, or most everything is done by this company called Zoom nowadays. So that's impacting us tremendously. Collectively, San Mateo County hotels are still down twenty-five percent to pre-COVID levels. To put that in perspective, the country, almost everywhere, almost every major market has recovered, meaning that they're at twenty nineteen levels or above it, and we're twenty-five percent behind it. Um, and recently, our CBP have developed a stunning new brand market to our region, the San Francisco Peninsula. The brand has already received award-winning recognition, has proven itself to put San Mateo County on the map for our visitors and meeting planners. The time has come for us to take in charge. We need to get out of the business of waiting for the compression to arrive from north and south and do our own marketing, which will bring back jobs and bring back CTOT collections. We can't change what's happening north or south of us. We cannot change what's happening in the big cities that surround us. We cannot change the hard, hybrid or remote work phenomenon. But with larger, more competitive marketing budget, we can and will find new business, new visitors, and new conventions to happen. All of these visitors will appreciate what San Mateo County has to offer, its natural beauty, easy access to SFO, stunning attractions, and diverse culinary scene. A larger marketing budget will be tremendously helpful for us. We appreciate your support and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to comment? Lisa?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Brownrigg, Vice Mayor Colson, Emily, Peter, and Ricardo. So nice to see all of you again. Um, I am here to support, uh, Feda. Uh, I'm the chair-elect for SF Peninsula, and, and I'm really proud to be part of this group that came here to, to support what we're trying to do. Now, more than ever, as Feda said, is the time to act, to change things. Um, we are all, thanks to COVID, fishing in the same pond. Uh, never would I have imagined we're fighting San Francisco for the same types of business. Um, used to be they attract, and if we're lucky, we get a little leftover. Um, never would I imagine that our average rate has suffered so much, um, and our occupancy. Um, I'll just share a statistic that, that I learned recently at a conference at my company Marriott, um, that out of the entire nation, California, especially northern California, is still lagging the twenty nineteen numbers. For some reason, we are hurting here, we are more depressed, and we are taking more time to recover, while other counties, cities, states are almost back to twenty nineteen, um, healthy tourism. So we definitely need your help, um, in passing this and helping us, again, bring more love, visitors, new faces, new love to the SF Peninsula. Uh, it's a little tough for us right now. Like I said, um, the other day, I just learned that we lost a huge group, not to San Francisco, but to another county that is, I think, inferior to us. But it's our marketing dollars that are hurting us right now. John Hutar is awesome. We do what we can with what we have, but the dollars that really help us springboard and fast-track so that when the visitors are back and companies are booking events again, huge events. And like Feda said, staying two, three, four days, not just the one day, they'll remember us and book us over other regions. So again, I thank you. Few other things I wanted to point out, if there's any fear at all that this might deter resident, um, visitors or travelers, please know that another study that I'd like to share with you, um, major destinations surveyed that had the transition from a T-bid to TMD reported ninety-four, ninety-four percent reported no impact to tourism or visitors. So if there's any fear at all that this change will bring about negativity or deter visitors, please know that it will not. It's been successful, very successful, in other counties and regions. Um, in closing, just thank you. Uh, I know you all personally, as well as professionally. I live here and, uh, very proud to be part of this awesome city of Burlingame. So again, thank you for your support.
Can, can, may I, Lisa? I, I wonder if I could ask, um, really anybody, but I wonder, since you're at the dais, do, do you think that the knocks that San Francisco has been taking just, just on and on and on about the way the city is being run and where the, the condition of the city is hurting all of us on the peninsula? And if so, is there anything we, I don't suppose there's anything we can do about it, but is, does that drag us down?
Definitely. I, I think San Francisco has a huge image issue right now, uh, in, in addition to, uh, safety and, and concern. That is a huge part of why, again, all my opinion that Moscone has lost major conventions, um, major. I could, I, I would tell you about ten major conventions a year, but definitely sell out Oakland, East Bay, and the peninsula every year historically. I've been in the hotel business for over thirty years, mostly San Francisco, Oakland, and now five years here. And with this loss, we've had no compression last year, maybe one time. Uh, we've lost a few others this year. We're hoping Salesforce slash Dreamforce will be more successful than last year. Um, but it definitely is weighing hard on us, all the negative press in San Francisco. I read a ton of newspapers every morning, and when I see another jab at San Francisco, I think of us. Like, oh, less travelers through SFO visiting San Francisco and therefore us.
Yeah.
Um, so it's tough. They're very tough. What we can do, i- it's tough, support San Francisco, whatever, whatever Mayor Breed needs to do. Um, I, I hope we can help, but at the same time, and not to be selfish, we've got to celebrate what we have. Right? And, and really showcase, we're a great alternative. Um, we always have been, but I think now more than ever with, with bringing on the new TMD, uh, John can move very quickly. I mean, he's already making plans, quite honestly. We're ready to press the button.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? John, you want to bring us home on this one, then? It doesn't seem wildly controversial, I will say.
Good evening, Mayor Brownrigg, Vice Mayor Colson, council members. Much of what we are endeavoring to do is administrative in nature. The City of Stockton went through this drill migrating from the eighty-nine act to the ninety-four in twenty-ten, San Jose in twenty eighteen, and most recently Santa Clara in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the modest increase in rate, uh, there's been no lift since two thousand and one. A lot of prices have changed since last year, let alone two thousand and one. And what we tried to demonstrate, uh, by, uh, attendance of our hotels, uh, with respect to your sleep schedule, we didn't bring all one hundred thirty-seven hotel members, uh, but we have on Zoom, uh, our former chair, Trevor Bridge, from the Costa Noa Resort, representing Coside. In the room, we have North County, South San Francisco, unincorporated, southern end of, uh, San Mateo County, uh, to demonstrate to you that this is a cohesive, thoughtful endeavor. And, uh, the priorities of the new district, we, we are optimistic. Uh, our board has had a planning retreat already to set priorities. We then took it a step further, uh, convening with the directors of sale of large, medium, small hotels to set those priorities. We have an RFP out to interview marketing firms to give us assistance. So we're, we're trying to run the race, tie our shoe, chew gum, and, uh, uh, we know that the fight is, is big to get, to make up this twenty-five percent that we've sort of been stuck in. Yes, it's better than last year's thirty percent, but, uh, we still have a ways to go. And, uh, we appreciate the support, uh, in working with this, uh, project with Burlingame City staff as lead agency. Um, they have been very thoughtful. They have asked very thoughtful questions. Uh, we have done our best to retain experts to give us advice, and, uh, I appreciate you taking this matter up and, uh, us reconvening here over the next few months and weeks to get this ball through the hoop.
Thank you very much, John. Okay, we will, I'm sorry, is there anybody in the virtual, Adam City Clerk who'd like to comment on this?
No, there is not. Oop, wait, nope, there's one hand up. Spoke too soon. Trevor, I have unmuted you.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members. Uh, my name's Trevor Bridge, general manager of Costa Noa. Um, since two thousand and seven, I've worked in the county of San Mateo for the past sixteen years, and I've witnessed, as, uh, my colleagues have mentioned, the ebb and flow of business. The ebb has been, uh, significant as of recent. Um, we've, we've seen, we, we host a, a number of, um, off-site retreats and meetings for Silicon Valley, and as you all know, that, that is kind of a boom and bust. Um, we want to regularize and normalize tourism to the area, and this directly impacts tax-paying, wage-earning residents of the county. And I've been a board member since two thousand and fifteen, when it was, uh, the previous, uh, iteration, and now SF Peninsula past chair. And, uh, I can see, you know, firsthand that economic stability through tourism is essential, uh, to the thousands of hospitality employees who work in this county. And the SF Peninsula is dedicated to the transformation, growth, and the future health of regional tourism. Reforming the TMD will benefit San Mateo County from the bay to the coast, from engineers to housekeepers. And I really thank, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for joining us. Any other comments, Madam City Clerk?
No, that's, that's the only one.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing, and, um, at this point, we simply decide whether to bring this back, right? And we've asked all the questions. Um, before we go to resolution, I just want to thank all of the hotel managers who are here showing support. We appreciate it. Um, for our Burlingame hoteliers, they know that this council believes very much in, uh, the hospitality industry, uh, and we do whatever we can to support it and look forward to continuing to be a steward of, uh, this district mechanism, so. And as y'all know who live here and work here, our doors are always open, so you don't have to wait for, uh, a council meeting. Uh, with that said, um, would anyone like to make a, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Motion for?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to bring this ordinance back for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Beach, seconded by Councilmember Stevenson, if we could have a roll.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Beach?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colson?
Yes.
Mayor Brownrigg?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Yes, um, Madam Vice.
So, thank you. Um, I really, I also just want to extend my gratitude to the people sitting in this room tonight for a couple of reasons. One, um, the amazing people you saw at the beginning of the night are really going to depend on our success in helping you be successful so that we can pay them the wages that we hope to give them. Um, so your success is tied directly to our success, as the mayor said. And from the time I've been on this council, you've come out, helped us. Um, we now have at least the pilings going in for Topgolf, which, um, and I think what you've highlighted, um, Lisa Kirchner, you've really highlighted the need for us to create our own entertainment and our own attractions. Um, most of you know the other work I do. My side hustle is belowly. Um, we're working really hard there, too. And, and so the more, I think, we as a city can think about how to support you, and you can let us know on that, the better that we can help create the synergies needed to get you back on, um, the positive upward spiral. So just, just, I just wanted to highlight how much I appreciate you staying and how much I appreciate you listening and staying and listening to all our employees to see how important the work you do is in this city.
Thank you for adding that. That was really good. Okay, well, we're, we're done with that item. You're welcome to stick around, but, uh, we also can release you. We will move on to item twelve, which is, um, really a continuation of the conversation we started with our planning commission a few days ago, and this is the, um, Burlingame Housing Opportunity Priorities and Education Committee, Community Committee Report. I will invite our amazing community development director to the podium.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Brownrigg and Vice Mayor Colson, members of the council. And, uh, we will have some slides. Some of them look familiar, so I'll go through them pretty quickly. There's a few new ones that we've put in. Uh, as we, uh, talked about last Wednesday evening, we're delighted to share the findings of the Burlingame Hope Housing Opportunities Priorities and Education Committee. Next, please. Uh, we showed the slide before, so the intent was to look at, uh, what are the best ways to invest the affordable housing funds that are coming from the commercial linkage fees from commercial development here in Burlingame? Next, please. Uh, committee members, uh, again, we want to show the appreciation. Some of them you've heard from on Wednesday evening, and I know we have, um, at least a, a few here this evening with us tonight, uh, so really appreciate the hard work. Next, please. Uh, and also the, uh, hard work of the Housing, Affordable Housing Subcommittee, uh, Mayor Brownrigg and Vice Mayor Donna Colson, um, Indy Council, I believe, is, uh, on Zoom should we have questions. She was our technical expert. Indy Council, I believe, is on Zoom. Should we have questions? She was our technical expert. And then, of course, Susan Clark was our really expert facilitator. Next, please. There were four meetings, and everybody made it right to the end and really dived into some very meaty technical issues. Next, please. As, as we mentioned, the commercial linkage fees are, the formula is new commercial development creates new jobs, which then creates more demand for housing. Next. And then this is from our five-year impact, impact fees report that under the ordinance, the developers of employment generating commercial industrial developments are required to pay the fee to contribute to the supply of low and moderate income housing necessitated by the jobs created by their development. So that's really the, the mission of, of where these funds come from and what they're intended to be used for. Next, please. So we showed who works here. There's, this number has been updated from what you saw on Wednesday, so it's gone up a little bit, thirty-one thousand two fifty-seven is. Now, these are twenty-twenty numbers, so that in, in any case, we're, we're getting a little closer to where we're at now. Next, please. Excuse me, and then we showed, again, what's important here is the number of households or employees that are making less than forty thousand dollars a year. It's almost forty percent, and that is attributable to our large service, service sector. Next, please. And that, just by coincidence, really kind of dovetails with what is considered the extremely low income or ELI category here in San Mateo County. So that would be thirty-nine thousand one fifty for a single-person household, and then, as you can see, it goes, goes up from there for the larger households. One thing the Hope Committee looked at was a salary survey to get a sense of what kinds of jobs go with these types of, of incomes, and we have hotel housekeepers, bank tellers, medical receptionists, hotel clerks. Those are all right in about that forty thousand dollar range, to give you some context. Next, please. This was a slide we did not show on Wednesday, but one of our committee members did request it, and I think it's pertinent, particularly what we heard in earlier with people's long commutes. They, there are about thirteen hundred people who are privileged to live and work in Burlingame. But then meanwhile, twenty-nine thousand, nearly thirty thousand commute in, another twelve, two thirty-five commute out each day. So we have way more people commuting in than, than going elsewhere. Next. And again, this is echoing what we heard from some of, some of the staff earlier tonight, is the, the number of people that live within ten miles, it's a good amount, thirty-five percent. But then beyond there, ten to twenty-four is twenty-seven percent, fifteen percent are twenty-five to fifty, and then there is a significant, more than twenty percent commute more than fifty miles each way. Next, please. This is the balance that's in the account right now. Next, please. And as we discussed, it will, it's going to double pretty soon based on just one project that had a groundbreaking or ribbon-cutting last week. And then beyond that, in the years to come, should all these projects be realized, looking at somewhere around fifty-five million dollars in housing fees. I'll just run past this, but these were the considerations of, it's really a balancing act. There's pros and cons and, and in terms of what level of affordability do you want to target, levels of income, and what kinds of services are amenities going to come with it. Next. And the, the committee went with two directions primarily. One was a quick deployment, is purchasing existing multi-unit housing, or more technically, probably having someone else purchase and, and manage on behalf of the city, but the point is to take some of the naturally occurring affordable housing stock, make it really permanently affordable through the ownership structure. But then also, long-term, is developing these different projects, either through gap financing, which we discussed in the last meeting, or in the case of the village, donation of city land, maybe it's a combination of all of the above. Next. And then we did discuss the preference criteria. We are looking counsel for direction on this, as we showed on Wednesday. Earlier projects had a more complicated or involved criteria. The, the newer developments just tend to prioritize people working in Burlingame first without really trying to split who's public and private, then people living in the city, and then finally, others who would like to live in the city. So that's the shortened abbreviated presentation. I am available for questions, and then also I welcome, well, first of all, comments from the subcommittee that oversaw this, and we do appreciate all the work and direction that you gave us on this committee, and then also committee members themselves who are here and either in person or online.
Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to start us off?
Well, I'll just be brief, because we've already done this, and I want to recognize, I think there are some people on Zoom, and I also want to recognize that our California Apartment Association colleagues that are out in the thing, and I particularly want to recognize you, because it's very late at night, and I know one of you has come from Livermore and the other from Sausalito to be at this meeting tonight, so that is pretty amazing, because you could have done it on Zoom, but you chose to be here in person. Really just, I want to, you know, thank the mayor for having the vision to get such strong community engagement. This is something we're going to talk about, probably at home for all, as a model for other cities and how to do their linkage fees. And I want to thank all of the people who provided very valuable input. It was the diverse input that coalesced around these ideas and was just an example of the wonderful opportunity of negotiation and of coalescing of really different ideas into a model that I think satisfied just about something for everybody and resulted in, I think, a really innovative program that's going to work out in two different ways. So just a huge thanks to everybody for all that hard work.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We did have a robust conversation. You know, I think the nice thing about having created this group is they did the hard work, and you heard some of this when we were with the planning commission, to really dig into what it means. And at the end of that process, a, a very diverse group of citizens and stakeholders basically said, I thought, sort of two or maybe three things. One, be biased to action. Don't, don't just sit on the resources. This is an urgent problem. We heard from many different employers, including Peninsula Family Services, that they are pressed to expand their business because they can't find teachers and, and aides. So, put the money to work was one. The other was a real, I think, appreciation for the creativity that our staff and, and city has shown, and a certain level of trust developed, I think. That we're not, you know, not to be overly prescriptive in this committee, because who knew where the opportunities were going to come? So we, they, they did coalesce, the committee coalesced around, especially trying to preserve naturally affordable housing, but there was also a real sense of of be nimble. And then finally, I would say that it, or a, a significant portion, maybe not everybody, a bias towards multifamily housing that has many different income levels within it. So when you can have somebody who's making more, somebody who's making a little less, that that was perceived as a good social policy outcome, not that it was required, but that it was a, a, a good thing to have. And certainly, the social science data supports that, too. So we really appreciated the hard work of, of the community members and the citizens, and we told them, we warned them all, we might call them back depending on projects come up. But with that, and thank you again, Director Gardner, for the overview. Are there any other questions or comments that our colleagues would like to make at this point? We did have a good, good conversation a few nights ago. In which case, I'll open it up for public hearing. I do have a guest in the audience who I, I think will be interesting to the council, but let me percy if anyone here. Robie, would you like to, please?
And there's, there's also, I'm sorry, I failed to mention, I see Elizabeth in the back, too. Who are hiding with the staff, and so I thought maybe we had given you a job here.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Roe Villan Antonio, with the California Apartment Association. It was important for us to be here today, because we wanted to say thank you in person for the opportunity, not only to be invited through this committee, but to also help and serve as subject matter expertise as it relates to the rental housing industry, talking about the current market and the needs of also housing providers, and helping them provide housing to work, workforce of very diverse income levels. One of the highlights that I wanted to talk about today was, just again, being part of the public process, but also getting to know the community leaders. As Vice Mayor Coulson and Mayor Brownrigg mentioned, it was a diverse group. And we learn from each other. That was the best part, is we really worked having a discussion among each other and learning about each other's experiences, life experiences, professional experiences. And that camaraderie resulted in some of us seeing each other in community members, at community events outside Burlingame, and we all saw each other as, it's almost like a family reunion, where it was a very welcoming space. So we wanted to highlight that. But also, I feel like the city did a great job by also hiring a facilitator to do the, the discussions. City staff were great, providing the, the framework, and facilitator came in and actually provided that welcoming environment. And what was great about it was that they weren't talking at us, but they were creating an environment for us to talk with each other. The informal discussion that took place, I felt, was the most valuable, and city staff were observing this all. But what was great was they captured everything in those informal discussions, and that doesn't happen often. I've been in several focus groups, task forces, you name it, in other jurisdictions where we have breakout sessions. And the one thing that we always say is, I wish our breakout session had, was, was more in detail, and that the facilitator captured what we were saying, or the city staff administering it, captured what we were saying, because that was where the, the magic was happening. And so when I was reading the report, and I saw the, the informal discussions and everybody's comments as minors, they were get, you know, get reflected in the report, it really made us feel like we were all heard. Main thing, too, and other things I wanted to talk about, is just, again, thank you for that, but also know that when we went into this process, we didn't want to just tell you what we wanted. We also wanted to make sure the community of Burlingame got something out of this investment. And part of that is, how do you make a community asset? A long-term community asset of this initial investment? How do you make sure that the city has control? And also, how do you make sure that there are potential for future, future usage, so that way that one-time, use it or lose it investment can become a source of future revenues? So we're thankful again, and appreciate to be invited back in if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Robie. Elizabeth, would you like to join us?
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth. I grew up here in Burlingame, still live in Burlingame. Love it. My parents have been here for over forty years as well. I just want to thank the council for taking the time. Housing is very important. I'm a single mom, so affordable housing is even more important. It's been hard over the years to really feel as if us as the community is being heard and listened to, and really have our thoughts taken into consideration, and with this group, not only was I heard, everyone's heard, and I feel like we did do a great job incorporating everybody in this resolution, and so I just thank you all very much for your time and effort to do that with us.
Thank you for the work you do.
Yeah, and for bringing your daughter. We all enjoyed meeting her. Wonderful to see a future Burlingamer at the meeting, and thank you. I, I personally want to thank you, Elizabeth. I thought you did a wonderful job. You made tons of contributions to the, to the thing, and I will just say personally, it was wonderful for me, because I got to know you better. And so I think one of the best benefits here was all of us getting an opportunity to meet and see and talk to each other, developing friendships and developing more shared resources between all of us, so that we can work together diligently to solve these problems in the future. So thank you very much for coming.
Are there, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? I did ask, is, do we have people from Heart?
Yes, and we have an email as well, which would you like to do?
What, I'm sorry, what is my choice?
We have an email and we have Heart.
Why don't we do the email and then Heart?
The email comes from Jennifer Fatt. She says, it may come as no surprise that I have a bias towards reuse and rehabilitation of listing structures, but I understand that the outlay there may result in more expensive units, at least initially. The reason for this correspondence is to highlight a recently completed historical survey of buildings along El Camino Real in Burlingame and San Mateo. The fifteen-hundred-plus-page report and related individual surveys of hundreds of structures illustrates the historical growth patterns, breadth of building type, and various architects who constructed over the past century along the highway. In Burlingame, the bulk of it, extent, housing was created from the nineteen-fifties to seventies. On occasion, these stucco box and podium types of apartments come up for sale. Many of them already have parking tucked under them. A handful of these noted in the report are architectural gems in Burlingame and San Mateo that were designed by mid-century master Mogen Mogans. These structures were previously considered too young to merit study during any of the various specific plans, including in the general plan. Having at that time not yet tipped the typical fifty-year-old and older benchmark. Between southern Milbury and northern San Mateo, seventeen apartment houses tip the scale as being eligible for the National slash California Register of Historic Places. In my mind, this has unveiled, unveiled another flavor of building stock already present. Perhaps some of these could take advantage of the state historic building code to keep rehabilitation costs in check, thereby making some in- products more economically viable. And then she includes a link, so I will make sure you guys pop this email.
Great. That's wonderful. Thank you. So I, because the Hope Committee focused so much on naturally occurring affordable housing, I wanted to, I asked some colleagues at Heart to briefly present some work that Heart's doing that's, I think, right on point. So I'm going to hand it off to the city clerk.
I have promoted them for you to panel, so.
Hello, Jen.
Hello, I'm also here with Boris Batkin, who is also logged in as Heart of SMC. Okay, great, there he is, I see him. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, for making that available to us. Well, hello, Mayor Brownrigg, Vice Mayor Coulson, and council members. It's a pleasure to see you. My name is Jen Rosas, and I'm the Business Manager for Heart of San Mateo County. Heart was founded in two thousand and three as a joint power authority of all the cities of San Mateo County and the county itself, with the goal to create and preserve more affordable housing throughout our community. Since we began through our developer loan program, we have invested over twenty-one million dollars to develop and rehab over one thousand four hundred and twenty-five affordable housing units, with a leverage ratio of thirty-two dollars for every one dollar that we've invested. As part of our first-time homebuyer program, we've hosted free educational workshops for over a thousand participants throughout our community since two thousand and eight, and over a hundred people just this year. We've helped a hundred and sixteen families achieve homeownership and remain part of our community with our down payment assistance of up to fifteen percent. This program helps families get into their first homeownership and sets the foundation for creating generational wealth and success. Our programs create stable housing for our teachers, emergency services providers, nonprofit employees, and other essential frontline workers. This year is our twentieth anniversary, and we are so excited to do even more with several new programs coming online. Our shared staff city support program will provide cities in San Mateo County with more experienced housing staff support as needed to get more affordable housing policies, programs, and developments through the pipeline faster. But we are mainly here tonight to talk about our new housing preservation program, which will leverage our unique structure to address the urgent need for affordable housing preservation and prevent displacement. And I'll hand it off now to Boris, our senior program manager, to share more information.
Yeah, you're on mute, Boris, Boris.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Jen. Thank you to the council for having us come and speak on this topic.
Hold on just a second, Boris.
Is this better?
Can you crank up your microphone volume, Boris, or yes, maybe that'll help?
Is this test? That's good. Let's see.
Okay.
My microphone is on the max, so.
Okay.
Go real close.
Yeah, better.
Okay, thank you.
And project.
Yes, okay. Anyway, as I was mentioning, thank you to the council for having us come and speak on the topic. I'll be briefly speaking on the program, but if you would like, we would love to come back and provide a more thorough presentation or discussion. As you all may know, as has been talked about, many low-income residents live in older and smaller, about six to twenty-unit apartment buildings, commonly known as naturally occurring affordable housing or Noah Buildings. Families residing in these homes are a significant and constant risk of displacement due to rents being dramatically increased or buildings being sold, and after careful And after careful study and a very thorough process, we created this new program to provide actual preservation, for long-term preservation for these properties. And so we can do that by acquiring these buildings. And our goal is to acquire about six to eight of them over the next two years, depending on funding. And upon acquisition, we make assessments, make quality of life repairs. We did restrict affordable units to maintain affordability. We reduced the tenants' rents based on income qualifications. And we also limit the annual rent for all units at three percent per year, thus preserving actual long-term preservation. So how do we do this? Well, HART is a JPA, which is a joint powers of authority. That means we're a public entity. Because of that, we don't pay property taxes. And so we can operate these buildings as a mixed-income community. Because there is a limitation on other organizations who are trying to do this, they have to pay property taxes on units that are eight, anything above eighty percent. So they can't do mixed-income buildings. And because the cost is so high, you need that flexibility for those higher units, as well as obviously not paying property taxes to help offset and preserve the lower rents long-term. And so we're also working with private financing and lenders to leverage the public funding. So then the subsidies are going to be much smaller. So that is a very brief overview of the program. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you very much, Boris and Jen, for being with us. And the reason I wanted to share this with colleagues is because it, to the extent that we decided, as we were directed by the HOPE Committee, to look at preservation, it could be that HART can provide that financial backbone. HART already has banking relationships. It wouldn't be the city necessarily having to go out and find a bank and do all of that. We could, we could partner, I think, with HART, obviously, a lot to be determined. But this is a program that is almost tailor-made for that recommendation of the HOPE Committee. So that's why I wanted my colleagues at HART to be here to share that coincidental but super complimentary work that's going on. Any, thank you very much, Boris and Jen. Stand by in case there are any questions. Yes, Vice Mayor Colson.
Thank you very much. Is there, is there like an acquisition or asset management fee? Or, you know, how does the whole program come together? Do cities allocate you funds and then you go out and purchase in their city for them? How does, how does it work?
Yes, thank you. So the way it works is we created a subsidiary JPA currently right now with the county as a member in order to be able to have the powers. And that subsidiary is who will go out and purchase the buildings. And then as the manager and owner, we'll hire property managers, we'll hire third-party assessors for any sort of rehab things. There are, there are going to be fees for the asset management, property management, there are those, but those are small to kind of keep the administrative costs for that. But a lot of that is going to be because we're going to not, we're going to actually have repayment of any public loans, HART fund loans that we're putting in, and regular private financing, and that is going to create the income to sustain this.
So this is, the board just approved this program, literally two weeks ago. So it's brand new, and that's some of the details.
Is it, is it, is it similar to the one that we looked at with Catalyst?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a triangulation off, not only at a, at a smaller scale. The Catalyst approach, for those of us who are on council, required a hundred million dollar purchase price to work. And what HART, what HART has, you know, determined in looking across the twenty, you know, cities of San Mateo County, that most of the buildings aren't that big. And so how could we do this at a scale that would work for the kinds of apartment buildings we have in our city? And so that's what this is designed, it's, it's a version of Catalyst, but slimmed down.
Okay, and just real quick on that, if we had funding and put it into HART, I think it's really important for us to retain the ownership of the building because that's someday how we would potentially redevelop them. Or if, say, for example, an opportunity came across our plate to build two hundred and fifty units at twenty thousand a unit, we might want to sell something. Or we might want to think about how to condominiumize some of these smaller projects for entry-level housing down the road. And we would need to be able to work with you in controlling that. So it's not like a give, right?
Right, no, exactly. Do you guys, I mean, I have one answer to that, but do you want to take that on, Boris?
Yeah, of course. One, one key difference with the Catalyst is that was purchased via bonds. And this is not, this is purchased via HART funding, public funding, and private regular lender funding. So it's a regular transaction, as would be purchased by any other nonprofit organization. But yes, we are open to, to the city owning.
Right, exactly. I think the title could stay with the city or could right, Boris?
Of course, yeah, exactly. Any way that the city would like, you know.
There is an interesting idea, which again, we have to sort of, you know, crawl, walk, run, right? We're still maybe walking. But there's an interesting idea that if you had a number of these different smaller hotels, you actually could wrap them up into a bond and pull out the capital.
Reuse, recycle. You just have to make sure that debt service works. And if it's extremely low and very low income with interest rates going up, that number might fall.
That's, that will be HART's management issue.
Yep.
If that, if it gets to that point.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. Thanks for answering the question.
Yes, Councilmember Stevenson.
Jen and Boris, thank you very much for spending time and sharing more about HART. I'm curious about the targets you laid out for this new initiative. I thought I heard you say focused on six to twenty kind of unit targeted properties and then a total number of six to eight projects within the next two years. Is that, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
And I would have that as our goal for the entire county.
Yeah, and that's across the county. That's not just.
We, I'm proud of the work that HART has done to get to this point, to be willing to take some, to be more creative and take a little more risk. It is HART's plan to come and speak more specifically about this. It just happened to be germane to the conversation tonight. So this is, you know, first run. But yes, Boris and Jen said, we plan to probably do presentations across the county. Any other, Jen and Boris, thank you very much for joining us this evening. I'm sorry, Councilmember Beach, did you have something?
No, I just want to acknowledge, I appreciate, it would be great to get some more details and a more formal presentation, given that this is all new action by the board. But I liked, it certainly is aligned with the HOPE Committee's goals of preservation. I also appreciated that you mentioned the quality of life improvements that would be invested in in some of this older housing stock, which addresses one of the concerns that came up at our planning commission meeting, too. One of our planning commissioners brought it up. Something we've talked about before is, you know, how do we, how do we address the safety issues of some of these older stock and a way to invest in them and keep them, you know, there could be some creative ways with these funds that we can create incentives for maintaining affordability. And this could be one where you solve, you invest in the life safety and you retain ownership in the public realm. And it could be, be an exciting opportunity.
Exactly. All right. I think we've had a good conversation. Director Gardner, is there anything else you'd like from the council at this point on the process?
We actually have another public comment, if we're still in the public.
Sure, please.
Tish, you can go ahead.
I'm Tish Basal, and I appeared before you last week as a member of the committee. And I will, again, just briefly say my appreciation for the amount of work that went into providing all the information for the committee to consider as we were making really more process suggestions to the council regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Funds. I like to call it Affordable Housing and Workforce Housing. Does it is, that is in concert with the linkage, the commercial linkage fees. I know on the committee, there was a great deal of interest in the preservation of affordable housing within the city. And I just want to keep, encourage you to keep in mind that there was interest in two things, which Mr. Gardner spoke to. And that was also the development of new housing through partnerships with other public entities or using other land so that in, that indeed, in the end, we're able to decrease the number of people who are commuting into Burlingame, who are mostly in those lower economic areas, I would suggest, so that they are able to afford to live in Burlingame. And the only way, in my view, a major way to do that is through increasing the housing stock for affordability. So because the focus tonight has been so much on preservation, I just wanted to raise that as a concomitant issue or interest of the committee.
Thank you, Tish. Thank you for your participation throughout. We really appreciate it that. Are we, okay, public comment is, is done. Director Gardner, what, what, how would you characterize sort of how we use the work here?
So, on the one hand, I think we would go back to the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, so yourself and Vice Mayor Colson, to get into the details of, it's, there really are two priorities that we've heard from both the committee and then we're also hearing here in the meeting. The first is the naturally occurring affordable housing, which seems to be an intriguing new idea and HART's ability to help put that into action is significant. So that would be a, a task to work on. And then also perhaps creating that framework for opportunities that do come along in the production side in terms of leveraging funds. Whether or not, I don't know whether the council needs to allocate a certain proportion or whether to kind of set more framework and policy for helping guide future decisions. We don't have to do that tonight. But we should come back at a later date with, with more of a framework of should the next project come forward, what are the kinds of things we're looking for? And, and the same with, you know, what kinds of buildings might the city be interested in pursuing with HART or whichever partner? So that's something we can work on and report back to. And then also, I know that HOPE Committee was very interested in use of public land and, and there are still some city parking lots in downtown, so that may be something we want to look at. I think that what was intriguing to the committee was that there could be, you know, maybe a little more direction from the city in terms of setting the program as opposed to reacting to something that kind of comes in as a SB thirty-five application and is kind of baked as soon as it comes in the door. That may allow the city to call the shots a little bit more, too. So a lot of different possibilities. I do look forward to working with you on the Subcommittee on that and continuing to engage with the council and also welcoming back our HOPE Committee members, should they want to stay engaged as well.
Thank you very much. It was a great process. We really, we said it already, but it was because of the quality of the participation, breadth of stakeholders, that I think it was really a rich report. And it's going to anchor our conversations at both the Subcommittee but also at the council level for the next five to ten years, I'm sure. We will keep you on speed dial as we warned last time, so if, if issues come up. Yes, Councilmember, well, this is the time for other comments, so please, if, let me.
I don't, I don't necessarily need to be first. It sounds like you might be closing.
I was closing, well, moving us, moving us onto license plates, but, but please, go ahead.
No, I, fantastic process, all of the above. One comment on, on the, you know, opportunities as far as surface parking lots. I think the planning commission meeting we had the other night, where we're doing a Broadway-specific plan, there's going to be an opportunity to really look at that holistically. We also said with our, with the creation of our new parking garage, post-pandemic, we're kind of moving into a new section where we're kind of overdue for a parking study downtown, too. It might be time to look at, that is probably not top priority in the queue, but there could be an opportunity to really look at our use of surface parking lots. And I don't think we've done a study well over ten or fifteen years in the, in the, in the downtown parking lot. So that could be interesting. Totally on board with the HOPE Committee preferences, you know, building new housing, existing, naturally affordable, leveraging and partnering other resource funds. I think it would be interesting as the committee goes forth to, there was a question that we brought up at the planning commission. How do you preference people? It's not a discussion for tonight, but I think that that's a really important question for, based on tax credits. Are you limited to who you can preference? Burlingame residents, Burlingame workforce, all that kind of thing. The one thing I wanted to bring up tonight, and, and I brought it up as a teaser the other night, absolutely the bulk of these funds have to go to long-term recycling, long-term investment. Is there any thought or appetite, as we had discussed in prior meetings, to reserving a small portion or having the committee explore reserving a small portion of these funds for homelessness prevention, for some kind of emergency rental assistance for folks that come to Samaritan House one time? Folks who have very little savings, half a paycheck away from, from losing their home? Do, is there an appetite for the committee to look at that? Wanted to flag that again as a possibility that we've discussed in the past as a council as we move forward. Certainly not the bulk, but something in this area. Thanks for considering.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Colson?
Thank you. So with regard to the parking lots, we are doing, Ricardo and I are serving on the Civic Center. And part of that conversation is looking at our parking lots with regard to Civic Center and how we're going to do all that. So I think that project should probably be finished first or in conjunction with that project. We would look, we would be looking at all the city parking lots. So that, that's kind of already, I think, moving along in the process. And when that's done in, in a year or so, there might be other lots, other parking lots that we could certainly take a look. And the other thing was, I, I just, I guess I would, well, we, we did talk about that. We, we talked about all, all kinds of adding, you know, like some money for, for, you know, homeowners, renters, whoever that might be in distress. Is there, I just remind me, Kevin, is there, or maybe Michael, was there, is there a legal framework around that? And the possibility that that cannot occur? Or we don't have to answer it today, but I guess there's.
That would be a great thing for the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we should look. It's, we would need to look into that further, yes.
Yeah, it's just the legal requirements around what we can and cannot do with the affordable housing linkage funds that come from developers to build housing. So getting also that purview. But I do acknowledge your discussion, and I think as our economic situation gets better, you know, we can go back to looking at it in the future. But that, I think that's, we didn't miss it. That's, I think, where we kind of came down.
Thank you. Mayor. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my thoughts on it, I absolutely for looking into the emergency rental assistance. I think that's a good idea. I love the idea of working with HART. I hate reinventing the wheel, and I think if they got it dialed down, I think we should just take advantage of it and, and work with them. I want to stress, and I brought it up at the last meeting, is I think we really need, it's important that we have also programs that lead to homeownership because that brings stability and allows people to build wealth and generational wealth. So I think it's important that, that we find ways to help people own their own property. And then I think after the meeting, the, our workers who are here this earlier in the evening, I think it's important that we find a way to prioritize them. And I know that there might be legal restrictions, but I think that we should really try to do that. I think that would be, again, it's an answer to some of what they're talking about today, so.
Great, great additional comments. Thank you all. I think we have a lot, a lot that's been accomplished and a lot to work on. So I appreciate that. I think we can move on. One is never done talking about housing. One does have to call it quits at some point. So that will take us on to twelve B, which is the automated, the license plate reader program. Chief Matucci, thank you for your patience. Coming to the podium looking relatively fresh.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me minutes tonight to, for this presentation. This is regarding our current agreement with Flock Group, Inc., who provide our automated license plate readers, or ALPRs for short. Just to give a brief background for those watching who may not be familiar or for those that need a refresh on what's taking place. Back in early twenty twenty-two, council directed staff to look into potentially utilizing ALPRs in Burlingame. At that point, we were not using the ALPRs. The request was made in response to a few residents reaching out to council members. It was not a police department ask. And after three presentations to council and thorough discussions afterwards, and a few follow-up requests for staff, council eventually approved their use in. council eventually approved, um, their use in April of twenty twenty-two. But again, it was, it was done after very careful consideration and vetting by council. So in May of twenty twenty-two, we signed a two-year agreement with Flock Group Inc. to provide ALPRs to Burlingame. But although the agreement was signed in May of twenty twenty-two, we didn't actually go live with the actual use of ALPRs until February of twenty twenty. It took time to finalize locations, get encroachment permits, install the readers, testing, training of staff, et cetera. But again, we did go live this February. And at this point, I think the program is going well. Uh, staff provides council with month, month of reports. And so just to quickly summarize some of the results, uh, we average about twenty-three alerts a month, so a little less than, than one a day. Uh, they're primarily stolen vehicles and the majority of them, we don't actually locate. By the time officers are dispatched and arrive on scene, the vehicle's gone. And to clarify, you know, this technology does not track the vehicle, though it's just an alert, just alerts us that the vehicle passed a certain location. So officers still need to, to go and try to find, uh, the vehicle, uh, with just a description. But we do locate about four a month, so about one a week. About twenty-five percent are located parked and unoccupied, so that's an easy vehicle recovery. The other seventy-five percent are located with occupants inside either parked or driving. Uh, and we've been able to recover and make an arrest in the majority of those situations with, with no issues. So most importantly, no pursuits or uses of force thus far as a result of any ALPR hit. In addition, officers and detectives run about six hundred investigative searches a month during follow-up investigations. We've had a handful of success stories and detectives had developed several leads based on these types of searches. Uh, so to circle back on what brings us here tonight, our current agreement with Flock is a two-year agreement set to end next May. So we're a little over a year into that agreement. Our current rate is twenty-five hundred dollars a year per ALPR. Flock advised that they're going to be raising that price at the end of our current agreement to three thousand a year per ALPR. Uh, but they offered to keep our rate the same at twenty-five hundred a year per ALPR if we agree to sign a new five-year agreement at this time. All of the terms would stay the same. Uh, this would save approximately thirty-six thousand dollars over the life of the agreement. Assuming we'd want to continue with the ALPRs after next May, but we can't wait until next May to make this decision. Uh, I realize that this is still somewhat of a pilot program, but I wanted to make sure you, uh, ma- make you aware of the offer, and the potential savings, and that at this point, the program is working, you know, well. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it back over to council for questions, comments, uh, or discussion.
Thank you very much, Chief. And given both the lateness and, uh, the light public attendance, I, I think it's fine to have either questions or comments at this point. I will, of course, open it up for public comment, but, um, at this point, um, please. Vice Mayor Coulson?
Thank you. I, I just want to commend your officers and you for the good work you've done on this. And I think you've helped assuage some of the concerns that we had at the beginning with regard to, um, you know, um, interactions with police and, uh, people who might have come into the city and tripped the license plate readers. Um, it sounds like your staff has been incredibly professional. They've, um, managed to, um, handle all the incidents without conflict. And, um, uh, with good resolution, good legal resolution. So that, my, my comment is just really to commend you for that, that work.
Thanks.
I really have to echo what the Vice Mayor said. I was, um, really impressed, uh, to spend an hour to talk somebody out of a car. That's just not the pattern across the country.
It's not.
And so I want to really commend you, Chief. I think that, you know, I think organizations flow down from the top and I know this has been a priority. And it really shows in those, in those stories. So I, I, I wanted to add my, my kudos to the Vice Mayor in that respect.
Thank you.
Um, yes, uh, Councilmember Beach.
Yeah, I'm curious to see if we have a public comment, but I want to appreciate, um, Chief for providing a lot of data for us in this report. And the explanation is very helpful for what's been happening on the ground. I also want to thank colleagues for our discussion a few weeks ago. I think one of my major reservations when this first came to us is that we didn't have a surveillance technology ordinance or policy. And the council, just in the last few months, wrestled that down and we are moving forward with that. We feel a heck of a lot better with, um, going forth with seeing the data, seeing how we operationalize it, but knowing that we have some thoughtful policy framework placed to deal with this. So, um, thank you for, for that, Chief, and to colleagues.
Here, here. Let me, um, ask if there is, let me open it up, Chief, if you would stand by for a second, uh, for public comment. If there is any, I know we got a letter from.
That's a public comment. So we have one from Jennifer Pfaff. It says, I have read the staff report and various statistics related to the license plate, reader software and I'm writing to encourage you to please renew the ALPR contract. It seems to me that this is an effective deterrent that helps our busy police force accomplish their jobs more efficiently. I did not read, nor have I heard of any incidences in the press with regard to local privacy issues, nor biases with the system. That I believe was the only initial presentation expressed by some in the past. Please continue to help our dedicated police force with this useful tool that can help each officer on a daily basis, work more efficiently and effectively for the safety of our. And that is our only public comment.
Great. Um, well, then it comes to, um, us to decide whether to renew and expand. I mean, basically, this is a question about whether we should, uh, re-up and capture the lower price, right? That's the operative question in front of us. Um, colleagues?
Other question, just in terms of the contract, is it still an annual payment? Or they're not asking any of that five-year commitment upfront? In other words, just looking at it from an operating budget standpoint.
They'll bill us, they bill us annually for just that year.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I've always been kind of a fan of the ALPR. And, uh, I'm, I'm just glad that the numbers, uh, that have come in, uh, show that it's working and that there are no issues with privacy and with, uh, abuse. Um, and so I'm very much in favor of it. You accept the motion. I would like to move to approve the item.
Sir, a second?
Yes.
Be happy to second. Uh, so if this requires a motion, we have one on the table from, uh, Councilmember Ortiz, seconded, uh, by Councilmember Stevenson, uh, to adopt the recommendation of the staff report. Um, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Beat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coulson?
Yes.
Mayor Brownright?
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That takes us through, um, the agenda. Uh, there were no committee activities reports, but would anyone like to make, ad hoc remarks?
I have one.
Please.
Um, so we have hired a new, uh, it will be official, I guess, at the end of the month, but the, they, um, there will be a recommendation for a new CEO for Peninsula Clean Energy. Jan Pepper is retiring. We are honoring her, um, this week and next week. And, uh, really appreciate the years of service that she has provided. She was very visionary. She was a person who really, um, was the right person at the right time to get this up and running. Um, she's now retiring. We are, um, going to be recommending the, um, hiring of our chief operations officer, Sean Marshall, who was a former city councilwoman in Mill Valley. So I love to see that we've grown our own. And, um, that organization, uh, is going to be moving forward with just a lot of really new and interesting work. Um, we have a reserve that has, um, built up and, um, we are going to create a committee. I'm on it, to talk about ways that we can effectively deploy that reserve to meet our goals of decarbonization, equity, and, uh, pricing of, um, of clean energy. So this, just in case anybody happens to see, you, you want to know, that's Sean, not Jan.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Uh, any other reports to share? Uh, seeing none?
I had one over here.
Just one.
Oh, sorry.
One, uh, in terms of the, uh, association of Bay Area government, I just want to let you know that in the next fiscal year, there will be an increase in the dues by each city. I know they're still working the details, but just from our own budgets and planning, I want to make sure the cities are worth.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, um, we have a lot going on, but, uh, the question is whether there are any future agenda items?
Yes, it's not an item. It's just, um, something I was, I just wanted to bring up. Um, I will, I'm going to be gone on July fifth, so I'm going to be calling in from, um, my nephew's wedding in a ver- very far away time zone. Um, I know that, uh, Councilman Stevenson is also out of town on the fifth. I'm not sure if there are any other staffer. It's, it's such an odd week because we have the fourth and then the fifth. And there's a lot of really important work on there and there's a tree appeal and I'm worried people might be gone. So I'm, I just wanted to propose, and City Manager might just cut my head off right now that I didn't call her before.
We're the city attorney.
We're the city attorney, but it's just, is there, you know, we take usually the middle two weeks off. I didn't know if there was any interest in maybe taking July week off and then meeting on the nineteenth and then taking the first week of August off again. It's just only be, you know, that, the third Monday instead of, taking the first Monday instead of the third Monday off in July, only because of the oddity of the week.
I think I let the city.
Maybe that's just a no. We think you might have other people out of town at that time because they had planned to have that, long stretch.
It's fine. I just want to bring it up, just to note, just so people knew there was, we were.
By May, is it the case that the two council members can't join virtually or?
No, I'm going to join virtually at.
Brutal.
I'll be joining in this time zone, so it's not so bad.
Okay, so we will have all five of us.
Yeah.
It would be a more awkward meeting for you, for Mayor, but as long as you're aware of that, I just, that was really the whole.
No, it was a good, it's a good creative idea. But I.
Yeah.
Confer to the city manager, uh, but we'll manage. Um, thank you for.
Yeah.
Doing it.
Yep.
Um, so, sorry, that was a good, uh, topic, uh, but future agenda items. Anybody want to say anything or? Yes, Councilmember.
Not a future agenda. I'm sorry to go back, just one committee report. There've been some changes in the commute.org, new schedule approval for Burlingame shuttles. Just look at a different consult, little change to the route due to ridership.
Okay.
I want to throw that out there. More details staff can give you, but I wanted to make sure.
Thank you very much. All right, hearing none, um, there are of course, uh, minutes and packets and so forth that are available to us and should be read. That takes us to the end of our meeting and sadly, um, this week, we do have somebody to close in honor of. And I'm going to turn to our colleague, uh, Councilmember Ortiz to, uh, tell us about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, June twelfth, uh, we lost a good friend and a great Burlingamer. Um, Melinda Ann Horowitz passed away. She was born in, uh, this, uh, February twenty-second, nineteen forty-six. Grew up in Hillsborough, attended Crocker Middle School and Burlingame High. In nineteen sixty-two, she met and married Joseph Michael Horowitz, and they were inseparable for their over sixty years of marriage. Uh, I was trying, I was not going to read the obituary, but there's one section that I found compelling, so bear with me. Family was paramount to Melinda. She was a loving mother and grandmother, a cherished sibling and a beloved aunt. Every year, Horowitz's calendar was created around family, family events with the Gil Martin clan, trips to Hawaii and the many endeavors of her six grandsons. As a neighbor and community member, Melinda was gracious and kind in her interactions with everyone she encountered. Melinda survived by, uh, her husband Mike, her three children, Catherine Jones, Christina Ten, and Joseph Michael Horwood. Remember that? Services. Uh, the rosary would be, will be on June twenty-first at six-thirty at Crosby and Gray. And the funeral, uh, Friday at ten o'clock at St. Catherine's, correct? Yes.
Thank you for sharing that. So if you would join me for a moment of silence. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.